Easy speedy.
Yeah, it's moving fast. I thought it was there, but got a lot going on in February that we've got to correct on. But it's January 22nd. We're here for our regularly scheduled County Commissioner meeting. And at this time, I'll call the meeting door and ask everyone to please rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is the adoption of the current agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose a couple of adjustments. The two current items on under regular business, Resolution 042 and 043, I would propose we move both of those to the consent agenda. And then on our workshop agenda, item number one is the Happo Center Master Plan. I'd like to see us move that into the regular business of this meeting.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to move the two regular business items into consent. And right after consent, we'll have the first workshop for the Happo Master Plan. Any discussion? I'd just like to add that in this Resolution 2025-044, we are moving the February night meeting from the 19th to the 12th. The meeting, the night meeting will be on February 12th. February 19th, we've got a COVID vaccination presentation on that day with doctors lined up that are world renowned. So we're going to have them on the 19th. That's the day they could come. We moved the night meeting to the 12th. Just wanted to make sure everybody knew that and was aware of it. So with that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to approval of the meeting minutes of January 15th. Any corrections, revisions?
Changes.
Okay. Approval of warrants and payroll rosters.
We have two this morning. Move for approval of fund expenditures in a total amount of $1,361,145.90 as presented and note that it has been reviewed and signed by two representatives of the Auditor's Office and the County Administrator.
Second.
Been a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Move for approval of salary clearing payroll and emergency management payroll in the total amount of $301,009.4. And note that it has been reviewed and signed by two representatives of the Auditor's Office.
Second.
Been a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you state that one wrong?
You know what? We transpose those.
I transposed them.
Let's just redo it.
So let's start from the beginning. We'll do fund expenditures. Move for approval of fund expenditures in a total amount of $1,361,145.90.
You did have that right. This is the salary pay clearing payroll.
Okay.
That first one is payroll. The second one is funds.
Funding expenditures. That's the only one you got to redo.
Payroll. No, this is payroll.
Yeah, but you did say payroll when you announced that, didn't he?
No, I I transposed them.
Okay, well, let's just redo them.
I'm just going to start from the beginning. Move for approval of salary clearing payroll and emergency management payroll in a total amount of $1,361,145.90 as presented and note that it has been reviewed and signed by two representatives of the Auditor's Office.
Second.
Been a motion in a second for management for payroll and emergency management payroll. All in favor say aye.
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 Move for approval of fund expenditures in a total amount of $301,009.4 as presented and note that it has been reviewed and signed by two representatives of the Auditor's Office and the County Administrator.
Second.
Been a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just two today then?
That is two. Yep.
Okay. Takes us down to public comment. Is there anybody in the room for public comment? Anybody on the phone? I don't see nobody coming forward. Takes us down to consented approval of the consent agenda, which we have six items now. We had an addition of number four with the 2025-044.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of consent agenda items, one through six as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second for the six consent items. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to, well, that will take us down to the workshop for the Happo Center Master Plan.
That's you. We said we'd do it quick for you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Members of the Commission.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. These two gentlemen to my left have been working diligently over the last six months. I know you thought maybe it's been a year, but it's only been six months. And seriously, we are here today to present to you the first draft of the master plan that we've been discussing with with the major two stakeholders, City of Pasco and of course Franklin County and the ability to do that. Today, we have Charles Johnson, whom you've met and has taken the lead in the major study and his firm that has been involved in in the county and Tri-Cities for quite some time since the initial study was done in 19. And so we really enjoyed working with. There, there. Thank you. And also Brian Cole, whom you also know here locally and has been working side by side with us on the master plan that will follow, obviously, the study. So today Charlie will present to you the draft of the master plan as planned and before us with the intent of meeting at five o'clock today, which I would encourage all of you to attend. We'd appreciate it at the Happo Center with the intent to present the full study that you'll you'll be seeing today on the draft study. The document itself will be available on Friday in written form for the for the draft because they're putting together the various forms that we were working on here today and looking at as we discuss that. So that will be to you on Friday to go for a full public disclosure of the plan. I would introduce Charlie to you again at this point for the first portion of the plan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Charlie.
Nice seeing you all again, and I'm grateful to be here, Commissioners. Charlie Johnson, and I'll be working with Brian to go through this. What I'd like to do today is just give you and walk you through our report. Pretty simple. Is it going?
Just pull it up towards your mouth.
A little closer. There you go. Much better. Yeah, thank you. So to begin with, I'd like to just show you what our table of contents is. Maybe. All right. So we're going to go through, you know, we set the stage in our report and we talked a little bit about the demography. Then we did a little abstract of our prior report. Don't forget that the whole premise of this report was to build upon a prior macro report that we did for Tri-Cities Convention of Visitors Bureau. And then we zeroed in on this facility at this project. We also talk about the master plan. And I'd like, that's been a complex word for this project. It's really a business plan with physical outline. And then I think we're setting the stage for a more detailed capital analysis and detail. But I think the real question you'll be asking is, is this the right use for it? And I'll get to the, but that is part of this equation. Next, we transmit it. So we talk about how we did our work. And then we talk about the economy. I'm going to get a little more detail on some case studies, but I just wanted to expose you to what's in the report. We talk about your growth and it's very positive. I mean, your incomes, everything is growing like a weed and it's going to continue to be like that. This talks about how young your community is and how important these types of facilities are for emerging and growing young families. Education income, we'll talk about that in the report. And then we talk about your spend. Your spend is right on average with respect to how much your population spends. So it tells us that you're normal. So you would like normal facilities, inventory, and you'd like parks and recreation as you grow. So, you know, that's, and you have interested people in sports. And then we look at your travel areas and your case studies. And then we talk about your information. You have 4,000 hotel rooms in the market, some of which are around this area. And I think, you know, as time goes, you're going to have more hotel rooms evolve. That's part of the mission of this type of facility. This facility is good because it's local use as well as tournament use. And a lot of times, we have a big debate between tournament use and local use. This is really very well located with respect to the neighborhoods, which are a little underparked in terms of number of recreation areas. So when we look at that kind of things, this is what we look, focus on and think about as we come up with the highest of best use. Talk about the hotel market. You're fine. You're in the 65 plus or minus occupancy range. Rates a little low. We'd like to see that pushed. And the demand is the only way you push that. And then location wise, there are a couple hotels nearby. Ultimately, around any of these types of facilities, you want to have evolution of hotels.
If you want to take questions during or as you proceed, how would you like to?
I think at this point in time, we, I'll start taking question. I just wanted to give you an exposure of that. And then I'll take questions as we go forward.
Okay.
All right. I think the point of this slide is really to illustrate the joint work that Brian and I have been undertaking. We've done our market work and Brian asked the question, how can I reflect that in the plan? And then how can I also make this an overall district that really works well? So when I get to the master plan, we talk about the the nature of the current surfaces, the sizes and those types of things, and then what the master plan will ultimately evolve to. And our market research could, I mean, could this be bigger? Could this be newer? Could this be more modern? Yes. But are there facilities like this that play a role in the community and mean a lot and are important? Yes. And that's the kind of facility this is. You have a Tri-Cities Convention Center, Class A. There's a role for a Class B facilities as well as tournament facilities. And that's what this plays, illustrates. And so I'd like to show a couple. Brian's going to spend time on the master plan. So I'm going to spend time on some of the case studies. So there was no demand summary of the complex that we were really able to build on. So we started from fairly low information data set and built data over the, the management team's been building data, Brian's has been building data, and we also have helped management build data. So we came up with some case studies in absence of information to really look at why these types of facilities exist and what they mean to their community. So we had to look at outdoor grass fields. And our illustration here is the nature of your success has been softball. And softball really makes sense to expand, but also having rugby fields and, you know, football fields and soccer fields on the campus. But the unique thing about this is the presence of other elements that really can blend to make a really creative and successful project. So that's the thing that Brian and I have been working on. So there really wasn't a lot of historical data on the ice. So we went and looked at a case study of ice facility that we think is going to be, make sense. Our conclusion is you're short on ice in the market. This is a good location for ice. And, you know, the nature of the relationship that had the prior tenant has been cleaned up. So now it's multiple use, ultimate leagues, all kinds of leagues you're playing in there now. It sets the stage that you will need probably an expansion. So local use can also have an opportunity to participate. That's the message from this slide. The message from this slide is there's all kinds of grass surfaces. It's competitive. People in this market has flourished. It's done a very strong job. It's part of your psyche, outdoor sports and recreation. And I think that that's only going to intensify because, you know, as your families continue to grow, you have a very family centric community here. And these types of projects make sense. So grass fields, you know, you could, I ultimately expect multiple other soccer complexes to evolve in the marketplace over time. So having a specialized focus on each of these subareas is not a bad idea. So we also looked at another, a couple other outdoor fields with softball rings and things of that nature and provided data and justification for that. You really haven't had the exposure to how these, the arena and the X event hall can work. It's been, you had a one tenant in there that was kind of gobbling up all the dates. And that's been reformatted. We have multiple use there. So this should be a multi-use building concert. You know, it may not be the same ones that happen at the Toyota Center, but it's going to be country western, smaller market, you know, three to 4,000 seats is, you know, the target market. But you'll do all kinds of things here. Cities suffer without these types of facilities. We're working in Sioux Falls where they've taken their old convention center and repurposing that into a sports complex. Now, our observation is, you know, some people have a definition of a sports complex as a new build, parks and rec facility, which we're seeing happen all across the country. This isn't that. All right. This is multipurpose. It could do a lot of those types of things, but it's not a dedicated $80 million new indoor sports complex. This is multipurpose. But it actually gives the market a different variety of types of things to do. So this illustrates and serves as a framework for the utilization. This campus brings a million people to it. We projected 250,000 turnstile people. So it illustrates on a strategy basis, if you're doing a Scottish festival like they do in Estes Park, 70,000 people. So these kinds of grounds permit that type of function to happen. And as Brian works on the master plan, if we look at the real estate that's around here, you could really curate a destination inch by inch, facility by facility. The real question here is how are we going to fund the initial capital? Once you all agree that this is the highest and best use, which we have concluded it really is, there's so much good commercial around there. You can do a lot with this district to help, you know, all kinds of opportunities there, funding, the character of the area. And those types of place making things are a real opportunity with this type of facility. So that really speaks to, so we built a event calendar. And that event calendar, we went by, we rolled it up. And we really put the number of events that we think are going to happen. These are for the outdoor fields. So we've got all kinds of tournaments that are going to happen. And we anticipate, you know, you'll drive 120,000 people to this facility. And as it grows and expands, you know, you'll be on a growth, you'll be limited. So you'll have to use other campuses for supplemental fields for bigger tournaments. But this will be kind of headquarters 101 for softball and multipurpose events. So this speaks to the attendance. This is important for us to understand because this is where the economic impact and fiscal impacts come from, the role of our study. This is a sporting complex still. So we're really rolling up all the people that attend, you know, 100,000 people. Then we get to ICE or the Happo Center. Again, we didn't have any historical data. And the way that ought to operate is the expo hall kind of hangs with the hotel. So they could do as much business as they can do in there and banquets and social things. Then the arena is going to be completely, should be completely reformat. I think the major capital would be scoreboard as well as reformatting the seating in there. And then other engineering things that may need to be done, ADA and those types of things. HVA is being addressed. That's a big, big issue, opportunity. You've changed the nature of the operation just by putting HVAC in that complex. All right. And both halves are now done. So it could operate with a solid Class B convention center and operate as a perfect Class B expo and entertainment venue. And that's the role it should play. All right. And so we, then we roll up the Happo attendance. This is doing 115,000 people. Again, I think you guys will blow those numbers away. We just had to be conservative. And I think we have been across the board. Then we look at ICE. ICE is underserved in the Tri-Cities area. You know, Corey opens up his ICE facility for public skating every once in a while. They do some tournaments. There's just not enough surfaces to do tournaments and develop league play. You're so close to Canada, there's a whole network of people. You all have uniquely able to serve here. And I think, you know, ICE is an important consideration. You have a starting infrastructure, very poor, you know, in terms of amenitization. Any expansion should address, you know, making this a nice civic community venue that will serve the community ongoing and expand your capacity there. So now we have a framework for demand for all these different land uses. And you'll see, if you're from Missouri, you'll have data you can see. So you can see that. All right. So then we turned it into what it means in terms of the economy. And, you know, a lot of people realize that this is joint use. So as we talk about the spending, don't forget the fact that we're serving a neighborhood. We're trying to create a destination that will be appealing to the entire state and visitors to come to the area. And we're also trying to optimize tournament play. So that's a balancing act that the management has to be comfortable with. The Convention of Visitors Bureau helps push as much demand there as early as possible. Then it becomes management's responsibility to fill it up. And so we basically, Larry had mentioned that we've been working on, we did a Tri-Cities study. We also worked on the convention center when it was just an idea and really have been helping work that. And we also just finished working on the Benton County Fairgrounds Master Plan. So I think those types of studies really equip us to understand your economy. And I think the veracity of our numbers will prove out for that. So we're in the midst of finalizing these numbers. But we looked at the tax and, you know, what we identified is the fact that there are also hotel taxes at the city and the county level. This is the county level, but the city also imposes a 4% hotel tax. So that's the things we're catching in our modifications. So as we look at the draft and send this around, we'd like you all, your finance people, to really confirm our inputs there. Then we start looking at the sporting. So we looked at each piece individually. So we got the sporting complex analyzed. And then we have the Happo Center analyzed and the impact of those, and then the ice rinks. And then we roll it all up together. And just to give you a sense of scale on some of these numbers, you know, the room nights, you know, that supports 250, 300 rooms in the market year round. So even though your events are on weekends and other places and you use hundreds of hotels in the market, if you were to add all those rooms that happened, you would support 250 to 300 rooms today. All right. And that's going to grow as the demand grows for this. Tax revenue, and this is, you know, you have to take that hotel tax revenue and triple it now to reflect the City of Pasco's tax revenue too. So you're basically the same thing. So we're already, in our mind, you'll be generating over a million two in taxes and supporting approximately, let's see where your jobs are. You're supporting, by year five, you'll be supporting 380 jobs.
You've got a pointer there that on the bottom of it's a pointer. When you're talking, would you point to where you're?
All right, there. So this is the tax revenue. Here's where we have to increase and reflect the City of Pasco's numbers to get them in in there. So this is the order of magnitude and it's going to be a bigger number than that. So just to give you a sense, there's a need for capital. There's a land that ought to operate as one project. And there is a demand generation. So it's your job to understand if this is good enough and there's tax revenue. But I think the biggest thing is the role this facility could play and should play within that sub area of the market. And they're helping all those hotels grow. So those are my repair remarks. And I'd love to take any questions that you all may have. And this will be in written form available to you all Friday. And in draft, just to, just to the stakeholders. And once you all go through it, then we'll finalize the report.
Questions, Commissioners?
I'll just wait till the end.
Yeah, I think we'll wait till the end. Then as Commissioner Muller.
I'll have any questions.
Eric, did you have a question? Because? Okay, all right.
Great, thank you. And I'll have to get situated here so you can hear me. Is that good there? Great. All right. So as Charlie mentioned, our role is really to go through a process, which is our basically master planning process, which really starts with an inventory analysis of the area. We then come back and identify opportunities and constraints using the information that Charlie has put together on economics and the needs. Then we move into how that could fit onto the site because there's some suggestions or recommendations that come from this as part of the master planning efforts. So all that then will be then kind of broken down. And then as part of the final master planner study, business plan, we'll have the the master planner part of that and some of these graphics. So that's not intent is this whole thing will be in the final report. There'll just be portions of it. So as you know, what we were asked to do is to look at the study area that's outlined in red here. And I think the important piece to that is that we're not just completely focused in on the Happo Center itself, but the surrounding community and how the actual rest of the commercial areas relate to this because there's going to be a lot of back and forth between those who are coming here to recreate and then the surrounding community, not only those who live here, but then the tourism components of it. Because there's a lot of retail and commercial businesses around, not only on Road 68, but on burden. One of the things that we found was interesting as part of this is when we typically go through this inventory analysis, we're just really trying to understand the land uses, how they relate to each other. And there, we're starting to get at it with this slide where we're looking at not only just what's a commercial property based on the current zoning, but then what is land or properties that could be developed? In orange, you'll see the county's property that is currently undeveloped and available for commercial development. It's owned commercial. And then above the Happo Center Arena, you'll see we've identified that area also as a, an opportunity area, which is currently now a bigger. an opportunity area, which is currently now a bigger kind of lay down, back of the house facility. And then you'll see a recommendation on the north side. As you also know, the sporting complex or the baseball, the softball fields are currently are also owned by the county, including the two smaller parking lots that are shown in the kind of light blues there on the left. So when we evaluated that as related to each of the other facilities, we're just starting to kind of understand what the proximity and the programmatic relationships are to each other. Couple key things that came out of this is that we feel like it's very walkable and with some minor improvements, there's some really low hanging fruit that could take on to make it easier to get from the commercial areas here back over to the baseball stadiums or even the Hapo Center. Whoops, hit the wrong button there. And then also just the vehicular circulation is important because I think if anyone who's coming from out of town, you haven't been here and you're coming for a tournament or even going to the Dust Devil game, you look at it as where's the wayfinding and having enhanced wayfinding and kind of make it more of a celebratory type of environment, I think is going to be really important as you move forward. And there's some really low hanging fruits banners on light poles, those types of things that says that or gives and provides that sense of place. So as we were looking at the properties, we just kind of zoomed in here and looked at, okay, here's some of the opportunities. And I think we're showing that, well, this intent of this is to show the commercial areas, whether leased or sold are are best suited for some of the amenities that Charlie was talking about, which would be more hotels and other commercial types of establishment, even something like a Dave and Buster's, if you're familiar with that type of thing, or a trampoline park or those types of amenities that give those families something to do after the tournaments. They have places to go eat and drink and entertain themselves. The other interesting thing here was as we were going through is that the parking and the sports field soccer complex, there's just a kind of unique synergy between the games that are occurring, not only for the softball complex, which are really the six hundred and twelve stalls, then also the nine hundred and some stalls here for Giza and then shared with the soccer complex itself. I think the thing that we wanted to identify here is that basically there's a lot of soccer fields out here and they're really all geared around soccer. There's not a whole lot of other uses. And as Charlie had mentioned, there's several other sporting types that could be utilizing these fields and they really should be evaluated and looked at how you could program it to gather those tournaments. In doing so, our next step is really to identify any sort of constraints that come along. And I won't get into the details of this, but part of this is really saying, what is it that are would be constraints to development or opportunities for development? So we walked through each of these areas. And I think, you know, one of the things that we heard from the city is especially is that they would really like to see an expansion of the concession stands to support the tournament play and then providing some higher level amenities. This is something that they're, you know, dreaming about, and I think will put in their future plans of expanding not only the concessions, but the seating opportunities, play area, maybe a splash pad and really kind of set as a little hub for the sports fields, the soccer and rugby and all the other sport, field sports that could be in here. The other opportunity here as we were going through is looking at the fields conditions. And as you've seen over the years, they spend, city has spent a lot of money on irrigating and it's still not perfect. And so the opportunity to come in and do some synthetic fills is a great added value to the community. Not only is it a higher level of play and attracting specific user groups. And then it's really using Charlie's information of how many fields makes sense, right? You don't want to bury the whole thing in that, but there's a there's a break even point of where you actually, how many you need and how much you should leave flexible. The other good news is there's some really good projects that have come in on the north side here. One is kind of summer hubs, food truck component that the city has allowed or is going to be placed here. And then also another restaurant that's going to go in that area. I think the it's great opportunity for those who want to stay on campus and be able to walk over and have dinner or grab something to go back to the game is is unique and it's going to just add to that continued growth in the area for tourism. The next area that we were talking about is really kind of a combination of things. And I'll hit on a couple of this, but the RV park. And a lot of this is we're going through, we're looking at number stalls and does it make sense, et cetera. But the RV park is being currently operated in a way that's going to, and you guys have been working through this, the commissioners have, but just figuring out how long the people should stay here. And I think it's something to continue to evaluate. Is this something that is more based on tournament play? So you have more turnover and you don't have longer leases on it? Or do we, does it continue to operate as it currently does? And I think Charlie, you had some in the master plan on that in general?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there.
No, the evolution of that was because of the equestrian events that happened there. That function is a little off. So you temporary use for those types of tournaments and, you know, if you ever do an equestrian show or those types of things, still that could happen here. Those types should be temporary rather than longer term.
As we get around the Hapo Center itself, we find some other opportunities. As we look at the ICE Pavilion itself here, a second ICE Pavilion makes a lot of sense. And as the report shows that there's the economics back it. The other is, is that the back of the house here is a really good opportunity for just when, you know, you have a concert or any other type of venue where you've got semi-trucks coming in and loading and loading in these areas, leave some room for them. And then it's also kind of general back of the house for staging, et cetera. But we felt like on this north side here is an opportunity for some additional parking. And you'll see that in the master plan as we come through. The other two things we heard from Ben Franklin Transit is, is that, you know, their their current parking ride is working for them and they don't see a need to really expand it and do anything more to it. But they do feel like there's a some planning that could happen between the city and county and the transit to have some designated drop off spots, which are identified as thirteen, one in front of the arena and atrium itself. And then there's already an existing pullout here that would make it real easy for them to come in. These would be destination routes where if you had a major concert here or there's a baseball game, they would somewhat like the fair does now where you've got a single route that runs up and down tenth all day long. So it'd be something like that, would come in, drop people off and head back out. One thing I wanted to point out here is that the the arena is also an opportunity for sports activities. And so we just went through and laid out a couple of different scenarios here of different layouts of different types of courts that could be brought in temporarily and moved. And you can see that you, you know, between wrestling, which you're already doing, pickleball, you can get quite a few mats and courts in here. You get to basketball or volleyball, it starts to get a little bit more difficult for the number of courts. But anyway, opportunities here in the Hapo Center Arena for sports also. In this area, we've got a couple of things that I think are important. Realizing that the properties that the county does have are perfect and ideal for these commercial activities, hotels, restaurants, et cetera, that we've already been talking about. We talked about the parking ride on seven, which is really evaluating how how the Ben Franklin Transit is operating it and is there any sort of shared parking agreement or not shared because you own the lot, but how you could you could utilize it when off parking ride hours are on there. So weekends specifically, whether or not people aren't coming here to park to go to work would be a good opportunity. And then the parking lot number eight, as you know, is is in kind of disrepair. The pavement's failing and it's not striped as efficiently. And you'll see here in the master plan that we looked at that and said, what if we did something different? We utilized it. And I think what we're going to see based on the Johnson's report is that there's there's going to be a need for more parking here because you're going to have a synergy and there's going to be a lot of people coming from multiple types of events. And having this parking that's kind of spread out and shared throughout the complex is going to be important. The other thing when the report came back and we say, what if we put a fourth pinwheel in here? And this was came from an earlier report that Charlie was talking about. And so we just wanted just to show in this is that, you know, there's it will fit here in this side and it makes sense to be located here versus on the north side of the sports fields if the city decides to move forward with this. And then the black line around this edge here is also shows the opportunity for additional parking. We're trying to maintain enough fills space up here so that we can continue the soccer or other types of sporting activities here. And another important thing is you've got a really great asset as I ninety two trail that runs through here, making connections to that trail and running it up in through the sports complex to make these smaller loops. A lot of people just come here just to walk and and that could even be our favorite dog walkers at the same time. So it just jumps over to the the master plan here. And this is just our first pass at it and I'll go through it. But basically what you'll start to see in here and we'll zoom into these areas is we're giving a nod to some commercial development. We show how this area could be restriped. Again, additional commercial development along Convention Center Drive. We know that the existing hotel is going to expand, so this gives a nod to their expansion. And then in this property, they're talking about additional commercial activity also. Show the ICE Pavilion, some additional parking, back of house area. We know that through the some planning efforts the city has done with as part of this, they've looked at a kind of center walkway that would make a connection back up to the retail here. And then also looked at an ancillary facility that's in that kind of bare corner there. What could that be? And I think, well, what if it's related to the Giza Stadium, probably a practice or or a facility that helps them as their part of their training. So looking at that, I think that, you know, there's we're starting to show us a stronger connection on Home Run Road coming in here and then a really strong connection back to the front door. So again, as I talked about this pedestrian and vehicular circulation, wayfinding are all going to be really important. We did get in the softball fields. You'll see that there there one large field, the largest one that, you know, that would fit on here, basically, and three smaller fields. So that that complex there will give you this area, the kind of the largest softball complex in this in the region. Yeah. And then we've added the additional parking. And I think the important piece for us, you know, when you look at the soccer fields or what we would call kind of multi-purpose fields, is that they we do get quite a few on here. And whether or not we have one isolated down here or this becomes some other activity is is debatable. I think we still need to kind of get through the economic piece, we're not in the economics, but just with the city of of what makes, yeah, the capital improvement cost. Because, you know, a pinwheel like this is, you know, three to four million dollars just for the field itself to be or the fields themselves to be developed. The green shows the actual fields that we're suggesting would be synthetic or maybe even sand-based fields. Those can vary, but as they looked at this area, they were talking, we were talking about, because it's depressed, it's got good viewing areas, maybe there's some seating around it that helps them. You know, currently it's lawn chairs and blankets. So these are some enlargements. I won't spend too much time on here, but these are the two, the parcels that the county owns. These are just typical opportunities for different types of development, hotels, commercial, restaurants, et cetera, coming in. And we felt that, you know, one of the things that's important when you as close you get to the Hapo Center is really creating kind of a mini village. I mean, obviously we have to provide parking for it, but if there was some way to make this a really destination, commercial area that's a little bit different than the stuff that's over on Road sixty eight would be unique. And so we're starting to give a nod to this more pedestrian oriented when you're in the plazas, et cetera. So like up in this area and the strong connections that come down and then would get you back to Home Run Drive. This is just an enlargement of the current plans that are going in up on Burden and the north part of the parking lot. This we thought was interesting. So this really continues to allow Ben Franklin Transit to operate as they are, but we just looked at just basically restriping the parking lot. And you can see we've added almost two hundred and fifty seven vehicle spaces alone in here. And that's just with restriping the parking lot. Obviously it needs some surface treatment to help it, but pretty, pretty simple fix and and expansion because you're not, we're currently not taking fully advantage of the space available there. And here we were looking at a couple of different things. One of the things we heard back is that we would, they would like to continue to operate the RV spaces. These are just power and water only, while these are full hookup. And so creating another bank in here that gives them a little bit more room was needed. We start to show obviously the this would be gated, so there's some fencing around here and then the ICE Pavilion, the public ICE Pavilion. Access to this, we still, you know, would be in the details, but that'd be something whether they're they're moving through this space to get to this pavilion or not. And then additional parking up in here. So really trying to maximize the parking on the within the campus. This is based on the improvements or suggestions, recommendations coming out of the report. And basically it shows the existing fields and the proposed. We do lose with the with the addition of the the pinwheel softball complex, we do lose the small soccer fields. And I'm sure you either experienced it, but it's what we call the mini mods, which they just set up on the turf and they set them up on the weekend and then they take them all down. Those, the city already has other fills where they could move that program and they're kind of already discussing how to take those types of that age group and move them to a different location. Or do we come back and and because the fills that are not in green, you could restripe those and 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 put the small mini mods on those two. You can do it, which is because they're just using cones, they're not painting or putting up full nets. And then this is just a nod to this play area. So you can see there's concessions area that they want to re either remodel or expand, splash pads, some additional seating. This is a nod to to some shade structures. They know that we'd like to see more shade out here and then a small food truck area. They've got a group who who have food trucks that they've already kind of contracted with and they would like to continue to give it more formalized at some point. And then this last is just to show this transit area. I think it's, you know, the this is a really very simple one. You come in and you can drop people off and then they can move out of here. And then this one is a little, I mean, it's it already has a pullout, but it would require a little bit of payment and some continued walkways to get people through. But these are the two areas that we've been talking with Ben Franklin Transit and just opportunities for those drop off points. And then the preliminary recommendations we have here, you know, is part of our our process. I just walked you through them, but I think the the big thing is if circulation, wayfinding, a little bit of place making, the the force pinwheel fills is going to be really important. And and again, providing more flexible fills, not just for soccer, but for other sporting activities is going to be important. Parking and shared parking, how those all work is kind of a puzzle and but I think an easy one to figure out because MLB is going to require a certain amount of parking spaces when there are games and then all that is going to be managed. But a lot of opportunity for, I think, even revenue generation off the parking alone, which could help aid in some of the future capital improvements here too. So with that being said, I think that is my last slide. And we get over to the questions.
Mr. Johnson, I think you had one.
Yeah, thank you. Excuse me, I had a couple. You know, I want to go back to your the comment around hotel occupancy, which was about sixty five percent, I think, is what you said. Is there any analysis to show the breakdown between weekdays and weekends or when that type of information would, if that's part of it? And then I'm really interested in you, you didn't talk about this, but you you mentioned that this is really a business plan. And so I'm really interested about, is there a section on on funding sources? Is there a section, did you look at, you know, if we did admission tax or if we did a tourism promotion tax? If we did other revenue sources that could assist in the overall operation of the facility or capital improvement of the facility, whether there was any any look at that and what that would even generate potentially? And and any governance options for both ownership, operations, et cetera? So is that kind of part of that analysis to lay out options for the city of Pasco and Franklin County?
That's certainly what we did with the convention center and and having done that with Benton. That's a skill set that we have, but that's not included in what we're doing. I think our real job was get confirmation that this is what we want to use it for. And, you know, I think that that And, you know, I think that that if that we can get that ball to land, then all that stuff can happen. And there's some really logical things to do here, you know, I don't want to mention any tools, but they're out there. And, you know, just simplification of the land ownership, simplification of creating a district, maybe using that retail. Some of the tax that you collect in that district to fund back into this, making all those types of things. So we work on that all the time. We just finished working on a TPA in Spokane Valley. So we were completely familiar with a lot of the tools that you have in Washington State.
Yeah, and just from the city's perspective, I think the opportunity for Recreation Conservation Office has grant money for sporting. Facilities and so I would imagine they'll continue to to look for that type of funding. And what we're seeing a lot in the in the state of Washington right now is the Metropolitan Park District's being formed, which is its own. Tax basically that would. That would be voted on and that would be to support recreation in general, the park and record, the entire parking recreation system. Which could also be a potential funding source.
Well, I got a few comments and and a few questions that I'll thread through. Sometimes we overestimate what we can do in a day and we underestimate what we can do over a period of time and so. I just kind of want to do a little bit of reflection over the last year. A year ago, we started on the the process of of kind of cleaning up the Hapo Center and cleaning up the area. And so we went through that process that was not without hiccups upon occasion, but. We were able to sell a bunch of the the unused. Things that were in the back of house and there's just been some really neat things that have happened over the last year. We had that auction and and got rid of a bunch of that unused stuff and then the community has come together. To really help clean that up and it's been really, really appreciated. Certainly, the the three of us commissioners appreciate all the the efforts of the community and. And for anybody that knew what the back of house looked like, it's completely different today. And so certainly appreciate everybody. And then. The night before last, anchor hauling and C and E trenching that a lot of people in our community know them well. They donated the hauling of eight hundred tons of rock. And the Heinen family that's a staple in our community and a well-respected family, they donated that eight hundred tons of rock. And so there's just been a tremendous effort over the last year by our community. To clean this facility up and then. The management of the facility with Mike's leadership has just done a tremendous job. Really specifically, sometimes it takes a little bit to get the ball rolling. And then, but once you get the ball rolling, it's fun to watch the progress, so. For those that have not seen, would encourage you to come to the. The meeting tonight at five o'clock, I believe. That will also introduce this this plan to the community, but to see the new carpet that has gone in, the new paint that has gone in. And I'm really excited. The staff there have gotten to to know my face well. I stopped by about twice twice a week for the last year. And, you know, see what's going on and if there's areas that I can be helpful and I try to stay out of the way, but but stay involved and help where I can and. And so, Mike, tremendous tremendous job by you and your staff. And I've really enjoyed seeing the 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 excitement and momentum that is starting to take place. And I'm, it's a, it's a, it's a feeling that you can you sense now as you go there. There's been just a tremendous amount of work done inside and out. And with the plan of, I seen your, would you go to the next slide that shows some of your recommendations? There you go. Improve existing parking lots. That's something that we've talked about over the last year and is with the staff. It's that's underway. There there is already a plan in place that will do parking lot repair and there's a bunch of these things that. That we've talked about that have already begun to to move in the direction that you recommended. So I'm excited to see your recommendations here. It's been, for those of you that know me, I'm a, I'm a. I I say actions are speak a lot louder than words and so. It's exciting to see this because I've I've been anxious to see this master plan and. I didn't get a sneak peek. I wanted a sneak peek, but I kept holding back and I said that I believed our. Our part in this was to was to help prepare the facility for the experts to to describe what what its highest and best use was. So really excited to. To see that. You brought some ideas that I hadn't seen or hadn't really thought about, so excited to see that. I think we have some really neat things that we've put into place. We have an excellent. Manager for the RV park and to hear some of your thoughts on. You know, making some flexible space for some some potential RV use, some dry RV use. I think that's an excellent idea. I know that I've talked to some people. I visited last week another community that. They have an event where they they have hundreds and hundreds of RVs come in for some of their specific events and they're, it's dry. You you've got to, you've got to provide all your stuff. All they needed is a parking spot and so their community has done that, so. I hadn't really thought about that for this and excited to see that you guys have have brought that as an idea. I wrote a few notes as we went through here, a question that I had that. As we get ready to do some of the repair and maintenance on the front parking lots, is it? For the economy of scale for us to consider, should we do that at the same time? Should we do this at the same time? It's it's there, it's it's operational as it is, but it does need maintenance and update, so.
Yeah, I I'm really intrigued and if you want to go back to the recommendations. And two of you, I think, are on the Ben Franklin Transit Board, I believe. They seem to have a lot of money. So.
They have a lot of money.
Okay, I was being polite. Why are we not having them do the upgrades to the park and ride lot or sell them the park and ride lot?
Are you reading my notes?
And then, no, and then Lisa or then, you know, we have a joint use agreement or something so that. You know, we have, you know, we could potentially reinvest that, those funds back into there and just figure out what that. That potential partnership would look like a little bit more. I don't know how formalized that partnership is now, but. It's something we should certainly think about. Leveraging that relationship from a financial perspective, particularly with their funds.
I know that the city has been working diligently and I was trying to remember and I'm sure somebody here knows, but I know that they they committed. To doing a bunch of upgrades to the to the. The arena. And I believe here a couple of weeks ago. The the team sold the Tri-City Dust Devil, it was sold, I believe, and there was a handoff from the old owners to the new owners at a city council meeting here a couple of weeks ago. And with the city selling that ground for the hub and also I believe they they've either under contract or sold for a. A new restaurant facility there. Thank you for coming in for your presentation. I believe Mr. Johnson needs to needs to run away for another meeting. But I think I feel like that there is just a real energy and momentum that has started to move. And and just really excited to see this. I I was chomping at the bit and I seen a sneak peek at the city council meeting last night and. And seeing this today, this is a much more comprehensive presentation than than I was able to sneak peek at last night and so. Really excited about a lot of these things. I think we have a lot of a lot of information to think about now and. I'm excited to see what the Hapo Center Advisory Board, I'm excited to to just sit in the audience and and listen to their discussion because really the. Advisory Board. You know, their job really is to is to wrestle through some of these ideas and and make some recommendations for us and I'm really excited to hear that. And. I I love my community. I watched this facility be built back in the nineties and. I remember distinctly one day thinking as we were driving past as the as the front wall of the arena went up. Thinking, what in the world is this facility doing out in the middle of nowhere? I mean, it's in farm country, it's in the middle of nowhere. You know, there's a gas station on the corner and there's nothing else and I remember just thinking, what in the world? What are these people thinking? And now this really has the opportunity to be the crown jewel in our community. And a real exciting opportunity for the city and the county to come together and and provide something that that our our community. Loves and that that generations from now, there will be, there will be, you know, fonder memories going back to this to this place, so. I don't know if I weaved a question in there anywhere, but I'm I'm really excited to see this and and thank you so much for all the hard work that's gone into it. And back to to what I said, sometimes we overestimate what we can do in a day and we underestimate what can happen in a year. And I know this has been underway for six months, but if you go look at the this. Hundred acres that that you're you're kind of master planning. There has been a lot of stuff happened in the last twelve months in that in that area from. You know, commitment to upgrade of the of the existing minor league arena. To sales of property, to commitment from private business to build restaurants and a food truck area and there's just been so many things and. I'm I'm about as excited as I can be, so. Mr. Chair, I I don't know if I got a question in there, but I'm I'm pretty excited if you if you can't tell.
Commissioner Mullen?
No, I just. Excited to see all the changes are being made and finally. A professional look at what needs to be done and for the betterment of the community, so, no, thank you.
So Brian, if you could go to your last slide, I've I've got a question or two here. Your concession stands are located right there, correct?
Yes.
What is, what is this right here?
That is another small field, soccer, multipurpose field, yeah.
My suggestion is that these concession stands here. And all the way from down here, if anything's here, this. It's not as long as a walk as what I've experienced with my grandkids when they're playing sock over by the fairgrounds. There's only one restroom.
Right.
And so what are what are you doing for restrooms for availability to people? Because I know when grandparents get there and there's. We need a, we need facility, multiple of them, multiple, because. Grandparents, it's a long ways to walk to get closer there, so I'm thinking maybe we need to make it more convenient for. Maybe something down down in this neck of the woods here, one here in the middle and then maybe one up here at the end or. Plus, you've got these baseball fields which have, are they going to be open for?
They'll be open also, yeah.
Okay, good. And that's my only concern is that people have the ability in the concession stand, maybe another one. Because that's a long walk too. If you want sales, you want people to have easy accessibility to it. That's my only suggestion.
No, I appreciate that and I and just in thinking about that, I think. You know, where we've got kind of the central, or at least that's where the central concession area, play area, et cetera, is definitely trying to be that hub. Drop people up from there. I think one of the things that we didn't show or illustrate in here. Is that typically these pinwheels will have some sort of restroom facility in the middle of them. So, you know, it's it's hard at this level to get to those that that granular element, but I'll put it on here and make sure that we. Capture that for sure.
I would think that would have that a restroom down there, yes. But otherwise, I'm I'm like the other commissioners, this is far and beyond what we anticipated.
Great.
And it is really coming together, so it is, it's exciting. Thank you.
It was fun as we were out doing the back house cleanup the day after Christmas. It was, it was a unique how that day turned out. The wind blew fifty to fifty plus. I think there was gust of fifty-five. It was just, the wind was howling and. And there were city council members out there, there was community members out there and everybody was working with a smile on their face. And I think. Growing up, I was always told many hands make light work and that that really, really was was shown to be true, so just. I'm really excited to to see this opportunity, to see the enthusiasm, you know, with with the council and and. With us getting this opportunity to see this. I'm I'm looking forward to the the community's input and the advisory board's input tonight and. And I really appreciate what Commissioner Didiar said there about having an opportunity for facilities that you don't have to go. Quite a few of the facilities or the events that have happened at the Hapo Center over the last year, I've gone and just. The one event I was there twice and spent multiple hours and and just ask people. It was a tournament, it was a wrestling tournament and so I asked, you know, where was this tournament last year and, you know, what do you need and how does it work and and. Try trying to learn and understand what what the users wants were and, you know, one of the things I found is they said. That internet access was was poor, so. Well, that's really, really easy to fix, those kind of things. But, you know, bathroom facilities, that that's an important component. You 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 get hundreds of people. Using these things in a tournament format, all of a sudden, you know, some of those facilities get to be pretty, pretty urgent and it's. Not a lot of fun, you know, looking this far down the road, it's not a lot of fun to think about having, you know, forty outhouses lined up in a parking lot, but, you know. I'm excited, I'm excited. Let's uh, let's uh, see what what the advisory board has to say and and the city council and let's figure out how to make this a. A a bright spot in our community that's that's loved and cherished for generations.
Brian, I had one other question. Maybe you could go to the slide of the vacant properties.
We'll get there, hang on.
There we go. There we go. So. There was a lot of discussion about what I would say complementary. Businesses that would support the the hundred acres. Could you talk about, will the report cover some of the options to achieve that? You talked about lease or sell. Other public-private partnerships. Could you talk a little bit more about how the, you know, this is obviously a really big piece for the board to think about? Because there's, there's significant value in 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 those piece of properties, so.
And along those lines, if I may, this piece of ground right here, isn't this where the car wash is going?
No, the part car wash is next to the north.
Right here?
Next, next north, nope, next up.
Oh, up here? Oh, okay, I got you. All righty then.
So, which, thank you, you actually make my point. I'm not sure that's a complementary activity, maybe, maybe people coming for for tournaments want to wash their cars. However, you know. How do, if we just sold the property, obviously we. We would be the opportunity of whoever buys it to do with it unless you condition the land and then you drive the value down. So. Help us, help, help us to start to initiate the thinking about, okay, we could sell it. But if we want to do businesses that support the facility. How do, how do we think about doing that? And does it generate similar revenue to just selling it?
Mr. Johnson, I'm I'm probably the one responsible for this, so I won't put this onto my associate here. The 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 whole area of these specific parcels a moment. We we initially felt when we looked at this a year ago. That we could see these properties as looking at the types of uses that would be complementary to the Hapo Center. And frankly, the whole area, the the hundred acres that we're sitting. So what we're missing, we're missing sports bars, we're missing restaurants, we're missing frankly additional hotel rooms. And and we will break down, by the way, and it's in the study, breaking down the hotel questions that you ask, which are very important. There's definitely an opportunity and a need in this area for additional hotel rooms. And and. Variety as well, fitting into this space. So we see complementary retail uses that could be here, yes, for those coming in, but also for the market. It it said over and over as we interviewed many, many people about what are we missing on Road sixty-eight? You've heard that we think we're a regional facility, a hundred acres here. And then what happens is. The 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 new truck. Happens. Twenty, twenty new trucks coming into the new facility on. On Burton with the property that was sold by the city. That has closed and and it'll be a draw. It'll certainly be a draw for the area. Then we really need to think about, do we need another one of those? In that area, probably not. So then the city's going to have to look at, does that make sense, bringing more food trucks in into the area? The Hapo Center, we have have had an agreement in the past, we haven't executed a new agreement. Relative to the food truck element which which is expanding, meaning bringing that to the Hapo Center itself, the building and so forth above and beyond. We have limited service, restaurant service in the facility. So those types of uses, we're we're thinking need to come from the private sector where possible. Where it it's an economically viable. So we look at that, the restaurants, the elements and other uses. Well, frankly. We had no control over. Well, frankly, we had no control over the, the new car wash, whether it's Mister or whether it's, there's a new one, by the way. It's not Blue Zoo, but it, it's looking at, at coming into the market auto-oriented. We don't believe, right, in your quest, in your question, yes, we've spelled out some uses that would be compatible there. The Dave and Buster's, others that could fit in with the, with the use. I mean, we've probably the, the one big property that, that we have put before you that speak to the park and ride, that speak to that large area there that is in need of not a lot of money. It, it's paving, that, that the ballparks and others use all the time and, and that is ancillary parking. So we did not put on the list, which I've had many people ask and many people want to buy that property for whatever uses. We've had apartments, we've had office buildings, we've had another hotel wanting to go onto that space just, just to share. But we, we've come back to you proposing, that's not, if we owned the 100 acres, that's one property that we don't think, no matter who owns it, should be selling until the whole master plan is, is determined by all of you. I, I also need to, need to speak to Mr. Johnson's comments on, on, as we looked at this project, and by we, I'm talking about the, the real experts, not myself. I'm referring to the others. And, and that is what is being proposed here, not talking other than two projects, any type of multimillion dollar funding to, to build something out. And we're making the assumption that the monies that are there now for HVAC in the facility and perhaps some additional uses of, of your buildings, we're not proposing, you know, great sums of money. The area that is needed with the city, and they're all aware of it, is looking to the expansion of the sports complexes that they presently have and own. The expansion of, of the baseball softball, just for clarification, which didn't come across very well last night, that was at the recommendation of the City of Pasco and their recreation department. And, and they, they felt they had good reason to say, look, we can really be a major influence in softball, baseball. And that's why the, the fourth ring is being, being proposed. So with all of these others, yes, we need to pave facilities. We, we, as was mentioned earlier, we, we plan on that in, in March and of this, this coming year in front of the Hapo Center. Obviously, as you'll see in, in the report, the expansion of ICE and, and that facility, it is, you know, four to five and a half million dollars to expand that and, and take care of your existing one. But as we also proposed, just for clarification for the public, is that we have only signed an, a two-year agreement with the youth program and the adult program so that this could be worked out and you could determine what, what you really do want to do. And we're, we're proposing, we think it does definitely make sense, getting with the other side of the river and working together to take care of the, the needs of, of ICE in, in the community, in the entire area. So that is, is an area that we think that we should be exploring together. The other elements of retail here, back to your original point, we, we think that definitely it does need to be master planned. The question of selling property versus leasing property. If one is in a position, meaning an organization, meaning the county, meaning the city, certainly leasing is, is a great long-term opportunity. If through your cash flow, you have that opportunity. Otherwise, a sale is obviously there. The land value is substantial. We, we didn't present that. That's, that's something that we can always be talking about. But that wasn't our purpose in bringing to you what we thought could be surplus properties. And so the group is saying these particular properties could be sold and/or ground leased. It wasn't mentioned, but I, I think you, you need to be aware. The, the owner of the Holiday Inn has been extremely, extremely helpful and interested in this project. And they have a strong desire to expand based upon what they're seeing happening now. There is a cross parking understanding that I will share with you, that I have, do not have the document. But, but it was done in the beginning that they have the ability, and I shouldn't call it cross parking, by the way. It's, they have the opportunity to use that one small portion of, of the property for, for a lease for their customers. Did I answer, Mr. Johnson, any of your? I, I think, once again, requesting governance and management and all of that, we've talked a lot about. And there's lots of discussion about format and what would happen. But you're sitting here with 100 acres of prime real estate, two organizations. And, and it, it does, you saw up there potential parking agreement. Makes no difference who, who owns what, but the ability for additional revenue, which I haven't talked about that on the parking, but just being able to deal with a large concert in the Hapo Center versus a major event in the, in the city properties for their event. There's 923 spaces that are fenced off right now. Not intentionally, I'm just saying that if you could imagine the ability of, of a really good parking plan that would bring additional income, but more importantly, just, just the ability as, as you talked and saw what Brian was talking about, bringing these, these people together. So a lot of this is, isn't big money numbers that we're talking about. That isn't it at, at this point.
And I was just going to follow up on the, on the market. You know, as this continues to evolve, it's really going to drive, I think, more interest from those developers who would be looking at properties here. And they're going to see the value of making complementary developments here. Because I think, for example, the, the car wash was, was something of, you know, probably did the, the analysis and said, hey, there's not another one around here for a certain amount of miles and thus this is a good location. I think, you know, unfortunately, it would have been a higher use there if I was going to suggest anything. So really, I think getting out and marketing these properties to the right people is going to be important also in, in advertising them. Taking this plan and kind of going to the next level of development to give some visual amenity or visual elements to it so that when you are outselling, you can say, okay, here's what we're looking at and here's the future of it. Being able to tell that story is going to be really important to those developers as they're looking at this type of property or this type of development, this area. Larry Woodnow, he's, does this for a living and as he's, I'm sure evaluating it, you know, he sees the synergy and sees what's happening probably at that point whether or not it's talking to the right people a lot of times.
Yeah.
So as it sits right now, these two areas right here that are grass, you have those for additional parking? Or these buildings here also?
No, those, those are being represented as potential retail. We, we've done 10 other site plans that we'd be happy to share on those properties. They're, they're large enough for some substantial development that would be compatible. That's the village that he was talking about to take a look at that would be compatible and uses there for the Hapo. The other is, as you know, I mean, we, we are not suggesting adding 50,000 square feet or trying to add a lot of other buildings to this, to this project. I mean, we're, not that you couldn't, but that's not what we've, what we're, we're seeing in that regard. The other property next to the smaller one, not to get in the weeds here, but that one, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned on that one until we have a good, clear understanding of our neighbor. Because that could be additional parking. I'm talking about the, the hotel expansion.
Yeah, the expansion's going to come this way.
Because that's the area, I mean, we easily could add additional parking and for, for the entire Hapo Center, but.
And this is the shared parking? And then this parking lot here is ours?
No, I'm sorry. It's, it's across the way. It's, it's just the opposite. In other words, that.
But these are our parking lots here. This is.
Those are yours, yeah.
Yeah, but this is Transit and us. We share this one.
With, with Transit. That's right.
And they're, they're not supposed to be parking in this one?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
The hotel is their cross sharing of parking is right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we needed any additional area adjacent to them when they do, we could put that in. But, but it's definitely, we don't consider that up, any of those that I've put up here a, a part of the Hapo Center and, and being needed today for that.
Yeah, and I, and just to clarify, on, on the commercial buildings that we're showing here, they're, they're really just, you know, a kind of a, we tried to, to show or illustrate, you know, the potential for more bars, restaurants, those types of facilities in these areas. And then the hotels and some of the bigger complexes over on this side. We really are trying to make this, you know, when you talk about villages, more walkable pedestrian oriented space. We obviously needed parking stalls to tie with it, but really making a really strong connection between there and the Hapo Center. And then also as you go around the corner to, through Home Run to the rest of the facilities. So it, it's one idea of how to develop. I think, you know, as you continue to go through, you know, you, there will be other ideas. But I think the main thing is, is to have a good visual presence from Burden. So when you come up here, you're seeing these facilities and you go, okay, here we've arrived, along with the Hapo Center itself, giving you that sense of arrival. And so I think the main thing here is, is that there's lots of options here and a really market will decide what actually ends up here. But I think if you keep your eye on, on what is the best use here and, and what is complementary, you know, it'll be better off than just selling the property and then we don't care what happens here, which I don't think is your intent.
Would, would you go back to the master plan just real quick? I didn't want to mess it up for you. Yeah, yeah. Once, once again, in, in looking at all of this, once again, this is owned by the county at 56 acres. And the balance of all of this is obviously the county. And point, point being in analyzing parking for what is here and the potential expansion of this. This is the only other new major improvement that we've proposed on the entire project. And we, we do think, by the way, this makes good, good sense for the long, long term. It doesn't need to happen next year. It doesn't need to happen in, in the near term. But, but certainly for the long term, this definitely, we're not, I know you'll see it in the drawing that all this goes as potential. Well, we definitely don't think that is, this needs to be back of house, no matter what you do in the, in your future for this building and these buildings as such, whether you expand the ICE or not. There's, there's an, there's an option that in, you go back to the youth or the others and say, this, this may not make sense long-term for us being in, in the ICE business. It doesn't mean that you have to be in the ICE business. You can lease it. We can do whatever. But as you know, the reason we recommended making the change was that the, the parents had been putting in literally thousands and thousands of hours in running an ICE facility. So we are planning, by the way, just to make it clear, in the next 60 days, we will have public skating and other opportunities for, for the families to utilize that. We're, we're getting it squared away now with, with frankly, the two groups that are, are really covering the, the overhead for the facility. The, the adult hockey group and, and of course, the youth, youth hockey. Are there any other comments of?
What was the number, again, a, a, an estimated number of what it would cost to bring in a second sheet of ICE?
It'll, it'll be, and I'm giving you a range because based on what we do. And, and we've got, we've got a, a good, a good idea of a plan, but it'll be in the four to four and a half to five million. And I'm not, once again, we, we have a number of ideas of how to get there that we'd be proposing to you. But the ability for the, the owner to maybe put up a couple million as a leadership gift and let the community come in together. There've been a number that have approached us that would be willing to assist and help in getting this for the kids. But I, I think, once again, we, we need to have very, very serious discussion with our folks across the river and the new owners of the hockey team here, professional hockey team, and, and bring the communities together and not, not be competing, number one. But more importantly, let's get two double, two sheets of ICE in the community that can take care of your, your issue because we are at, at that stage. That's my feeling and, and prepared at least to, to introduce some of that at, at the present time.
All right. Is there any more questions?
I'd just like to say that, you know, I, I am excited about the master plan. I believe it should be a destination point. The Tri-Cities, at least Pasco, doesn't really have a center. And we have a movie theater and a few restaurants. And.
Yes.
I know myself and my wife, we try to support the restaurants in Franklin County, but a lot of times we find ourselves going across the river. So to keep that business in the Franklin County, and if you're bringing all these people in from out of town that are going to have a, a need for a place to stay, we don't want them running all over the county trying to find a restaurant. And I think that we would, it's a perfect opportunity to bring those restaurants in and create a center to where people are going to want to go and stay and enjoy their visit here in Tri-Cities.
That's, that's, that's exactly right on. Very def, very definitely. We, we feel the same. This, as, as you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time over the last year talking with these folks. They've got a, a great project there that's compatible really with what we're talking about and what we are. It's, it's a private, and the same with the rest of their land. They have some very valuable land. They're not, they're not selling that off. They're not out, you know, they, they could, they could do that. But I think they see the vision of, of the big picture and they've been involved, as have a number. And we have a, a number of folks that have approached us. And we have a number of folks that have approached us on this this real estate and have indicated that nothing's on the market today from in in our representation of our job of managing your properties to date. So we we think as this unfolds, this evening, we we are planning to talk with the press, indicating this is only a draft, that this is the opportunity to get it out into the community and the two major stakeholders can and will, I'm sure, listen to ideas or thoughts that are that are happening. We, I I guess at at this point, two things, just clarification. We will not be handing out anything tonight. We we will be sharing study. What you saw today will be what the advisory board will be seeing. The the hard copy of all this will be Friday, so that that'll all be to the city and and to the commissioners. And we have not indicated a timeframe of when the final report would be done. That's going to be determined by the two major stockholders and landowners here that as as to how much more time you do want to study it. And I would assume with with some joint planning discussions with 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 the group and any additional information, if there's any anything else, that's why with Mr. Johnson talking about hotels, it's very important that you know what what is happening with those hotel rooms, not only the one, the three around the space, but but through the whole area and how that's going to be placed. The last comment on the city and all of our representations and all of our meetings with them, the rec and their department heads and others, they're all, this is their plan on their property, which is what Brian and what we've been providing to Charles as as to what their planning is at this point, knowing today they don't have three to five million to put in the circle. So that may be five years down the the road, it may be much later. That this is just giving us a roadmap and and they a roadmap so that they can start to do the planning, looking at how everything could be managed or couldn't be managed. That's all open for discussion, and and there's been a lot of discussion there that we'll be happy to share with you that we've we've received, you know, in that process. But this was important that we felt this comes forth first and and presenting it. I'm, I would have hoped we could have had it done 30 days ago, but it it wasn't possible.
Well, thank you for your hard work on it. I look forward to to seeing you again and watching the presentation again tonight.
Yes, I want to just say thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. We'll see you at five o'clock at the Hapo Center.
Very good.
All right, so that moves us down to the Commissioner Administrator updates. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Can I probably fairly briefly, and we have some number of the workshop items. On the staffing front, we have met with a potential planning director candidate, so we'll be sharing more information about that. We're providing some opportunity for other commissioners to have a chance to meet with that individual, as well as some of the staff. Upcoming workshops, on February 12th, Mike McCall from Hapo will be coming in to kind of give you an operational update of what's going on operationally, kind of the, if you recall, at the last advisory committee meeting, there was a 2024 year end report. He'll provide that to the board and to the to the public as well, as well as kind of the first quarter update for since that. We've got the benefits kind of discussion for workshop coming up, and we're also doing one in salary matrix for you that will also be coming up. On the Hapo Center, we are continuing to work on finalizing all of the materials to secure the $3 million grant from Department of Commerce. So I appreciate some of the staff that are doing work on that, and we are nearing the final decision on design build versus design bid build and our next steps to secure contracting for that project or going out for proposals for that project. So more to come on that for sure, and we got the advisory committee meeting this evening, so make sure folks are, it's an open public meeting, so the public's more than welcome to attend to to watch that meeting as well. I would, you all are have probably been contacted as the board and a number of other staff and elected officials perhaps, but we have the recruitment firm, GMP, will be doing some discussions with some of our our leaders here in within the courthouse and within the community in regards to the finalization of the recruitment for the county administrator. So that will be done here over this week, and very likely, we will get an initial recruitment. I do want to remind you that I will bring to you next week a decision, and I don't know if anyone has any more feedback around the salary. We discussed a salary range of probably about 145 to 175 for the position, using the comparables that we discussed from around, kind of around, I would say comparable counties throughout the state that have county administrators. And just because they have a county administrator title does not necessarily mean they have the the full breadth of responsibility for supervising the functions beneath the board. Sometimes that's different. So tried to give you like comparables for that as well. And then within the range of that, that is certainly certainly lower than, but some of those are, but certainly competitive, and that's, I think, what we want to remain is competitive. And thanks to Margot, who's doing a lot of the coordination for the work with GMP. The last, I think the last items I just wanted to to give you an update on, and this is very timely from our last discussion, and I actually need to go back and look about leasing as in our property management ordinance that we have been looking at. Really appreciate Mr. Briggs, who's done a lot of work on that, and just want to go back and kind of look at that one, following the discussion that we've just had, and how that might, may or may not, look at whether it's just not property management, but surplus to leasing, to the things that we might be able to do as an as an entity in relationship to those. So that's what I've got.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had a CCOM task force meeting last week that Michael Namcheck went as my proxy. I had a previous engagement that I needed to tend to. Excited for President Trump to be back in the Oval Office. That is, it's been refreshing to see the leadership and the accountability that he is, he has been bringing from the from November the 5th, when he was elected, to now. There's been hostages released, there's been world leaders that all of a sudden realize that accountability is back, and I'm thankful to see that. I've been, I've started through the process of reading his executive orders. I'm not necessarily a big fan of of ruling by executive order, but as I've read through his executive orders, there's a lot of them that are not, it's not necessarily a legislative thing, it's a, it's the direction that this country should go. It's a, it was headed in that direction before, and many of them, President Biden rescinded and changed, and we've been doing some ridiculous and unnecessary things as a country, and I'm thankful to see that he has changed that and has put, he's put America back as a as being the number one responsibility of of the Americans, and I'm excited to see that. We already spoke earlier about the Hapo Center and the the 800 tons of rock that we've laid down, and we're just had a machine dropped off there last night that I'm going to hopefully have the opportunity to get in. I don't get a set in a piece of machinery very often anymore, and I'm kind of looking forward to that, so I'm going to spread out some of that gravel, and and I believe there's a few others that are going to help with that. I had the opportunity to go to a meeting yesterday that I wanted to share with you, and so I've been paying quite a bit of attention to this, and our new Washington State Governor, Ferguson, on his first first day in office, he signed a number of executive orders, but one of them, I'm going to read the first portion of it to you, and it ties in with the meeting that I went to yesterday. So Executive Order 25 dash 02 aims to address Washington's affordable housing crisis. And this is the crux that I want to share with you. Under the executive order, the governor directs state agencies to review all regulations surrounding housing permitting and construction. The order further directs state agencies to write a report to the governor's office that identifies regulation that could be rescinded or streamlined to aid in housing. And these agencies have 60 days to report on this. He he provided further comments after that, and some of those comments were that if if a permitting agency does not fulfill their obligation within the appropriate timeline, that the their the applicant's funds would be returned to them. And really, what it did was provide accountability to permitting agencies to do their job in a timely manner, and I am a big, big fan of that. And so yesterday, the meeting that I went to, it was a, the Tri-City Home Builders Association is putting on, I'm going to call it a series, that all the different permitting agencies around the region, the counties and the cities, they've invited to come and give a report on their processes of how they of how they do permitting and what it is. And there was a portion of the presentation by our staff at that meeting that had me frustrated to a level that that I I find hard to properly describe today. So through that, through that process, I have sat down with our administrator and went through that thoroughly and and in detail. And following that, there was a few concerns that had to do with Benton Franklin Health District, that has to do with septic on on lots and so forth. And so I went to the Health Department, had the opportunity to sit down with the director, the the dep- or the director's deputy and and the inspector that serves Franklin County, and had a very, very productive and helpful meeting with them. I was really appreciative of of their receiving me and and the the answers and the and the response that they had to. They said that they would be happy to go to the Home Builders Association and and put on a a, you know, presentation to them of what their processes are and and look for efficiencies. So I I connected the the Health Department's director and the Home Builders Director. I I connected them and so that they could work together. And but as I as I look at some of the the executive orders that the president had, I see the executive order at the state level, accountability is is necessary and timeliness is necessary. One of the, as a developer myself, one of the most expensive things there is in the development world is the unknown. There needs to be a a prescriptive and and understandable process laid out, and if there is saying things that that can can be streamlined, that needs to happen. And so I would, I would tell you that I'm going to work diligently on that and try to bring some ideas to you too for consideration, if there's if there's ways that we can streamline our permitting process. I've had lots of phone calls over the last number of weeks about permitting, taxes, roads, a number of things, and have been working diligently, trying to answer questions. Appreciate the the assessors receiving me in all the questions that I ask. Been digging in and trying to understand that process and and what it means and how it works. This afternoon, our administrator referenced it earlier, this afternoon, Eric and I are going to meet with with our HVAC HVAC contractor out there at the Hapo Center. I believe that time is of the essence, the work that we done last year to go and and get some of those fundings allocated for updating the the heating and air conditioning at the Hapo Center. I believe that we need to put that that plan into action soon, and so I appreciate that as that efforts kind of draw to a close, that that shortly, we should have some opportunity to take action on that and and get those that work underway. And the last thing to answer your question about the salary thing, I have considered that, asked a lot of questions of of quite a few different people, and I would absolutely be in favor of of increasing that that level that we have currently put out there, and I think it would probably be appropriate to go above that number you just shared with us. I think leadership is expensive in in some cases, whenever you run a complex organization like like we have here and and the responsibilities, and and so I would be in favor of increasing that that upper end number. Of course, it's going to depend on qualifications, but I would be in favor of taking that number up to $200,000 for the recruiting qualified candidates for that job. So, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Commissioner Moen.
So last week, I had the law enforcement officers and firefighters disability board meeting out of that. I did talk with Mr. Harris. We did send 60 trucks down to California to fight the fires, and, don't quote me, but I believe it was over 200 firefighters from this area went down there. All arrived safe safely, safely. I heard some things said about the inspections of the trucks, and it's just routine, but they do inspect all the trucks when they reach California. They go through a basically like a DOT exam, and everything passed with flying colors, but, you know, that also protects us too, if those trucks are damaged while they're in California. So Franklin County Emergency Management Meeting, there will be an emergency manning emergency planning simulation coming up in February. Also, Board of Health, I was again elected chairman of the board for the Health Department, not concurrently, but it will be my second term as chairman of the Board of Health. Had Visit Tri-Cities this morning at 7:30, and just some of the things that came out of that, you know, the big events they had last year was Ironman and horseshoe competition, which were new items that were events brought to the Tri-Cities. But the focus of the Visit Tri-Cities, their primary focus is to fill hotel rooms by increasing our share of convention and sports bookings. And just a side note on that, they are funded by the lodging tax, the tourism performance activity, and sponsorship. The lodging tax brings in about $830,000, and that's both Benton and Franklin Counties. But the $3 per room night brings in 2.3 million is what's projected for 2025. So filling those hotel rooms and working with Visit Tri-Cities should help us in bringing new events here to the Tri-Cities. So, and three, of course, sponsorships from local businesses. Also had the honor and privilege to welcome the State Veterans Committee to the Red Lion here in Pasco. That was a great opportunity to thank our veterans and give a brief background on Franklin County. So there were, Franklin County has really deep roots with the veterans. If you were a veteran of World War II, given the opportunity to apply and get a land sale agreement, start farming. And to give an idea of that, my father was one of those veterans. He was number seven in the drawing, drew block one, and like my dad would say, when he first got here, there were no roads to his farmland. He drove across the sagebrush, found a staked out piece of property, and started farming. So just a big thank you for the veterans that have made Franklin County what it is today. And that concludes my presentation. Oh, one other thing, too. Out of the veterans, when I was there, they had Quilts of Valor Foundation, and I know that they're always looking for donations, and I think it's a extremely well, just a great program. They've, they've, they've give, they've set out 4,000 quilts already, and 400 of those have gone to residents here in the state of Washington. But it's just a way of giving comfort back to our veterans, and what better, what's more comfortable than a quilt? So if anybody has any, any things that they want to donate to a worthy cause, I think that the Quilts of Valor Foundation is a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mullen. So yes, last week, Board of Health, and I want to congratulate Commissioner Mullen on becoming the Chairman of that.
A lot of thanks to you, thank you.
I nominated you because.
You did.
And then.
Neither was he.
But I was quick on the, I was quick on the nomination process.
Yes, thank you.
Columbia Basin Sustainable Water Coalition Board and Stakeholder Meeting was last week. Franklin County Emergency Management was last meeting, and Commissioner Mullen was on that also. Ben Franklin Council of Governments was last Friday, and they made a mention that they would like to hire another person to go over the grant process. And this is what troubles me is because this is a growth of government. Because when you hire people, you've got the benefits, you've got the, the retirement, you've got everything that goes with that. And I think that we need to really look to try to do it with in-house instead of hiring more people. Went and seen the Hapo, seen the, the rock behind, seen the new carpet, the paint, place is really looking sharp, just incredible. Want to address the fact that our AG, we're still waiting on that, his, what he, what he feels if it was unconstitutional pay or not. And I think we just need to keep applying the pressure. If we need to write a letter, we need to. And then, of course, the inauguration, it is a new day in America, and there is a sense of patriotism. And people, everywhere I go, people are just smiling and they're just happy. I mean, it's, it is a new day in America, and I'm, I'm very thankful for this man that he is willing to stand up and serve our country again, because he is truly a servant. He donates his salary to causes and didn't get anything out of it. And I, I just, I think the, I truly admire and love this man. So, thank you, President Trump. So with that, we will go down to public comment. Is there anybody in the room? Oh, yes.
I just had one, an additional item that I was looking at my notes and I skipped over. You know, I did want to just give the Board an update. It was, this is an outcome from our, I guess towards the end of December perhaps, it was as we did an amendment to cover additional costs for, for jail medical for 2024.
Oh, yes.
And so, you know, I have been working on trying to understand, and I, as I indicated, when we adopted that resolution, that I would delve into trying to better understand why were we paying more than perhaps what the contract certainly appeared to, to call for. So I've started that analysis, I met with the sheriff, and the sheriffs will be allowing me to work with the commander to kind of further delve in to really understanding what the current contract calls for compared to some things that perhaps we have approved but haven't amended into that contract to versus are there additional services being provided in that existing contract that we have yet to fully include as well? So there's differing elements and different levels, but I just want to give you a quick update that, you know, we're certainly working on that.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. Okay, so we'll move down to public comment. Is there anybody in the room or anybody on the phone?
Good morning. I really appreciate the Hapo presentation. At the time that it was being reviewed and we're adding $5,000 more, plus the $20,000 a month, plus the $80,000 a year, plus the general fund. As a taxpayer, I was not happy with the Hapo Center. As a, as a taxpayer, I wasn't seeing the whole picture. And I'm, I'm changing my view, and my frustration that I gave to you a couple meetings ago is on me. My deepest apologies, sincerely. But I was trying to protect my county and my kids and my grandkids and my great grandkids' future, and it just wasn't making sense to me at the time. I'm also concerned about the healthcare in the jail and the cost, because I saw the story in Yakima and wondered if we had the same company that went belly up. So thank you for being an astute county administrator that's meeting that out and really getting down to the detail. I do also want to mention a couple of things that I mentioned at the city meeting last night. The opportunity for renewable natural gas opportunities for our trucking. And, and being our own energy generating community where we say what we pay. And it feeds directly into medium and heavy haul trucks. And we have a lot of that with food processing and with the distribution centers we have, but also the potential. And you, you said it kindly earlier, but I really believe as a taxpayer that we are paying way too much to a very visionary Benton Franklin Transit, Transit Company that is, that has gone beyond providing transit to people who need it, that don't necessarily have a car, to basically putting a burden on us that we must have this mass transportation. It, it's going to serve for a long time. And if we're going to have our own transit system, and I did send an email to you, then having our own renewable natural gas is, is also going to support that idea. And it doesn't mean we can't work interlocally and work back and forth with Benton, but I think we are going to a point where our tax dollars need to stay here. I like the idea of more hotels, and as far as restaurants, we have a bunch of fast food type restaurants, some are higher, higher class, I guess you will. But I truly miss cousins. I wish we had a couple of medium range family that, that also had meeting rooms in them. And that's another thing that I didn't see in their plans, is we have so many philanthropy or, or community meetings where we don't, we don't have room and space to, to meet at. And I'm talking about groups of about 40 up to maybe 80 or 100 monthly, weekly. And that builds our community when we can get together and do stuff. So I, I hope that we can see more of that. And I'd also like a nice restaurant to come to with all of our farming. You look at what they do at Lulu's, that, that is, shoot, that is a restaurant design that we could do here. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Good day, James Sexton, JMS Construction. I would like to approach you guys about having a workshop on the CPACE financing again. We did a presentation earlier, and I would like to keep moving forward with that, if there's a way we can have a workshop or any of that kind of stuff and kind of see if we can get this for the county, because it will benefit the county financially, just in my project alone, it's over $280,000 in one year. You know, that's just my project, that's just me. So that's, and then the tax revenue that it would bring by helping that is a huge deal. The savings to me on my first project, right, is about 9% in interest rates. It's about $2.8 million in savings on one loan, right? Over the project of my whole entire thing, it's $32 million in savings and interest payments alone, right? So that's a huge, you know, deal that, and it benefits the county also. So if we could see about getting a workshop together and going for that, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Can, can you repeat, repeat please, so that our administrator can get it written down?
CPACE Financing?
CPACE Financing, okay.
It's an energy financing program. So it's commercial, energy efficiency, blah, blah, blah. Financing. So basically what they do is they take all of the, the state's energy programs they've ever put in place, and they finance that on a lower interest rate, right, for commercial buildings and stuff like that, for used buildings or new buildings. So, and it's typically around that 4% interest, right? Compared to like, we go out and get hard money loans at 10 to 12% interest, that's a huge difference, right? It is through the county, it is a non-recourse loan, is what they call it. So it's put before the parcel number, and that's why the county has to be involved in it. And then we would set up a program where there's a fee to apply for that through the county, so the county is getting paid. There is a fee for every time the taxes come out, right? So every time that's done, it's, there's a, a fee for that. And then there's a 1% up to $15,000 per loan that's paid to the county at every time a loan is done. So it's, it, it's kind of trying to offset the cost of employee tracking employees, you know, finance, you know, all that kind of stuff. So that way it's no burden to the, to the county in that direction.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
We had a, we had a pretty extensive presentation before. And, Mr. Chairman, I think that'd be appropriate.
Yep.
Maybe to, to see if we can put that in a workshop and, and learn and, and I've dug into it and, and yeah, would like to see a workshop, thank you.
All right, is there anybody else for public comment? Nobody on the phone? All right, and I just want to remind everybody that our night meeting has been moved to February 12th, and February 19th is our COVID presentation about the dangers of the COVID shot. So I encourage everybody to attend.
Will that be at Hapo?
I, I believe we'll be just fine here. I don't want to expel any more county funds. I don't know if we're gonna, if, how, how well attended it will be. I don't want to move it out there and incur costs that we don't really need to do. Everybody can watch it virtually, and I understand that we are being watched virtually by a lot of people in the county. So this is good that we have this ability, people can, and they can call in and comment too, on the public comment virtually, so. All right, with that, we'll move down to executive session. Do we have any need for an executive session today?
No.
Oh, do, yes, please.
Did the Title 17 workshop make it onto the agenda?
Yes.
It did, yep.
Okay.
We have it.
Just waiting for that.
Okay, go ahead. Do we have a need for an exec, no, no executive session?
No.
Okay. So at this time, without any further business for Franklin County, I will adjourn the County Commissioner meeting. And do we need a break?
Five minutes.
Five minutes break? I believe we're a little bit longer than five minutes, but we will, at this time, I'm looking for an approval. What's that? You? Okay, so at this time, I'll call the workshop to order. And I'll ask for the approval of the workshop agenda, minus number one, that's already been presented, so we have two through four today.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the workshop agenda items two through four as presented.
Second.
Been a motion to second to approve the workshop agenda of items two, three, and four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So with that, we'll open up public comment for the agenda items only, for discussion. Or, uh, comment only on the agenda items that are listed. Is there anybody here that would like to comment? Anybody on the phone? Seeing nobody, we'll move right into item number one, benefit discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I just wanted to bring this back as a continuation kind of from our conversation last year. Where we got to the middle of summer and, um, we had the presentation on ICRA. And then, um, kind of we were running out of time for our group coverage, working with Hub. What we wanted to do negotiations for our benefit plan for last year. Just as a reminder, we did present the changes to, uh, the contribution structure. Creating VIBA and an actual benefit for each employee who's on that contribution structure. Lowered some of the amounts for waivers. Um, so basically, I'm just here, cause we was kind of mentioned, we'll get started back in the conversation beginning of year. Here we are. I wanted to get your feel of, if you want to look at making any possible changes this year. If there's a direction you want to go, that's, that's really what I'm looking for. I don't expect necessarily a full answer today, just as we're coming back after about four or five months. But I wanted to get the ball rolling to see if there would be any changes this year, so we can do that in the timeframe we have.
Well, I just want to say thank you, because yes, you got to get started early on this, so you're bringing it to our attention. Commissioners, do you have any ideas? Uh, Mr. Johnson, uh, being a former commissioner?
No, I was really, maybe, Margo, you could give them the range of examples perhaps as well, what changes they might be thinking about. Might be helpful to stimulate some of that thinking, go from, from going out for, uh, for proposals for new, completely new, uh, services to refining existing, to, you know, what might be the range that would look like. To us going to, to, to PEB, to, you know, the state.
Yeah.
Or, or joining Teamsters, or, you know, just, or just putting it out on the street and seeing what proposals we might get. So what are the, kind of the range to taking our existing plan and just refining it?
And, and I know early last year too, um, former county administrator Mike Gonzalez had, had been talking to other brokers. So there's definitely other brokers looking at going for that. August is like the go-to-market time, so if we wanted to stick with, you know, a, a group coverage, there are other options. PEB, WCIF, um, Teamsters has been brought up before. We do have Teamsters groups with the county. FOP has mentioned that they have a medical, there's a possibility of looking at that. Um, some of the other, um, I'm not just gonna say this right, but groups like PEB or WCIF. Some of those things we can utilize a broker for, others we cannot, so that would be all in, in-house, um, action. Um, on the side note too, with even with our current broker, and I'd need to have more conversations with them. But we do have the bed admin system, the electronic system for, um, selecting our benefits. And then last year, they built out with Primera and some of those tech credits that we had. Away, so when somebody signs up, the, the information automatically flows over to Primera. But we might have to look at a new bed admin system. We have a lot of different groups, a lot of different contributions. It, it's, the more complicated it gets, the harder it is to, to build that system too. So that's another aspect to consider, wherever, how, whatever changes we might make, or if we don't make any changes, things like that. So I don't, did I miss anything?
Um, I mean, you can also discuss. I mean, outside of just moving to a new broker, there's also just the, the ability to refine your current benefit contributions and stick with the same provider. And, you know, say, we have this plan, now we do want to make some minor changes at the beginning of the year for 2026, kind of that forward thinking as well. So there's that broad spectrum. Margo, I think is just looking for some direction on, well, do we actually want to take the time to see what else is out there and present that as well? Or do we want to take the current contribution system and maybe tweak it? What do you, what do you want us to do at the beginning of the year?
Commissioners?
I would love to see a, uh, well first, let me back up. Thank you for coming early. And, uh, you know, we're not, we're not headed to a 30-day deadline, so thank you for that. Um, I would love to see a comprehensive look at the options and, um, what is the market, what is the market interested in? Um, I've watched the county pretty carefully for a long time, and now being a commissioner, I've never seen that happen. I don't, I'm sure that it has at some point, but I would love to see a, a complex, the complex is not the right word. A complete, uh, look at what the, the options are from, from ICRA to, um, any brokerage that, that is interested. To some of these other things that I'm not familiar. Um, I provide, um, insurance to my employees. And, and, uh, so I'm, I'm, I know enough about it to be, um, maybe ask some dangerous questions hopefully. But, but would love to have experts to, you know, tell us what, what, what the options are.
Okay.
Be nice to see the options. That's about it.
Okay.
And I too would like to see ICRA, you know, reintroduced, uh, more time to really look at it. Again, I, I just want to make sure that we're facing a financial problem because of what has taken place in the past. And that is that our healthcare benefits are going in some cases to salary, and in other cases to, uh, VIBA. And I, uh, mentioned today in our county commissioner meeting, we're still waiting for the, uh, PA or the, the A, the AG of the, the state to even rule on this for us, or to make a statement on it. They're not making a statement on it, and so.
It's really to answer a question. We have a question, and so far they won't answer it. We're, what, a year and a half?
At least a year and a half, even, we're closing in on two years, and they haven't even addressed it. And to me, that's wrong. Do your job, AG. Now you're governor, and it's off your plate, but now the new AG's got it. But we are, we were 2.2 million a year? I mean, that's a lot of money for a county to be putting out for VIBA. And when nobody, none of the other surrounding counties, counties are even close to that. So, uh, I would like to see us get back to where if you didn't take the insurance, you would get a VIBA contribution, and that's it. You don't get $1,650 a week in your check, or a month in your check. This is unsustainable for a county, keep paying out this kind of money. We have got to get back to realizing this is insurance purposes. If you've got better insurance than Franklin County, good for you. But we're not going to give you a check for $1,650. We've got to get this back into, into sync with the rest of the counties of the state.
Yeah, and I, and I think the, I, I think we're on that path and understood that portion of the path. So now I think the big portion for us to really focus on, and not, we're giving up on that, because I think you've, you've charted that course.
Yes.
I think in, um, and so if we continue to chart that course with, with, um, uh, maybe no in lieu of, and cash in lieu of, and no, and bringing down a VIBA to those that waives, we, we, we've charted that course. So now the question is, what type of healthcare insurance do you want to then deliver, um, in conjunction with that, to that portion of the decision? So, um, yeah, so we'll talk about, you know, the types of, um, offerings that could be done. Uh, whether we bring folks in to just kind of lay that out, or whether or not, um, uh, you get to the, I'm trying to think about how we whittle that down to decision-making, so you can see what your options are. And then, you know, what's that point in time to go out for a proposal for, you know, if you choose that route? Because it's a lot of work to, to kind of get to that point, and so, or do you stay with, with the current broker? And the current, uh, is a Primera, which offered fairly, it wasn't a huge increase.
No, we were very fortunate this year.
Very fortunate, so, um, I, I have seen historically, uh, people want to attract your business the first year. And so you will see rate, dramatic rate decreases and say, we are, you know, we did really well. And then, boy, the next year, despite what you might think is not, you know, a pretty good claims. Uh, you, you, they, they raise your rates right back to where you were, so. Yeah, and then you get yourself in a yo-yo of going back and out and forth, so. It would also be interesting, I don't think, uh, there are counties that, that have, that have done self-insurance as well. It's really complicated, and it takes a big, it's a big lift to be able to start that. But you could explore what that looks like. You've obviously have some big, you know, uh, reinsurance levels and some things. It's probably not something, but it's certainly, those types of options exist for you.
There's, if I could add to that, there's actually an option too, so we're fully funded. And then there's the self-insurance, but there's kind of an in-between too.
A hybrid.
Yeah, so, which, I mean, if we, if we wanted to try to work towards that, we'd probably want to transition that. That direction does, so we could get there, but yes, that is an option.
I just think it's really healthy from time to time to go back kind of to the basics and, and, and reevaluate. And I think that that would be wise to do. You've faithfully come back, you know, early in the year, you know, before a decision is needed. You said August, and so that would give us time to consider some of those things. Um, you know, catastrophic insurance plus, plus self-insuring, um, may be an, an option that, that, uh, but I don't know, I just, I just.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know Lincoln County went that way. It worked really well for them for a period of time, and until it didn't work very well for them. So, I mean, they're sma, much smaller county as well, and so their, their risk, you know, is more concentrated then as well with fewer employees, so. Um, but it worked really well for them for, for a period of time before they then went back out. And it was, I think, at a time when I think the insurance, the WCIF was having some issues, and so they had withdrawn from, from WCIF, so. Okay, uh, I, I think the other thing for the, the board to kind of be thinking about is, um, you know, in relationship to, you know, and we can talk about, yes, you know, there are a lot to explore with like a Teamsters or an FOP. Uh, do you sync yourself with, with, uh, with, with a, with a group that you may, what happens if you, if you lose that group as a, as a bargaining unit, so, so to speak, you know? Where the, the union might vote to join another union, and yet your insurance is synced with them. Do you all of a sudden like, man, we've completely lost that? So there's, there's pros and consequences, pros and cons of that kind of decision as well.
And I'd like to add that I think we need to make sure we get all the input that all the employees from the county. We want to hear from you. We're making a decision for your insurance, so please, if you have, if you would like to really look at ICRA, or you want to look at a different plan, or you got an idea, let us hear from you. Because this is your future. Uh, us commissioners are elected in one year and we're gone the next, so.
Do you hear many, do you hear much about the, I would say, the, the, you know, outs, outside of, I know what we hear on, you know, other elements of the VIBA and maybe not, you know, not having 100% play pay. The insurance itself? Coverage itself?
From employees in particular, especially in my interactions with union groups, there really isn't any issues when it comes to the provider. Um, most of it is basically premiums, what we're paying out of pocket, that VIBA. And that conversation, those are kind of where unions are coming from, and they, you know, that's what they would like to kind of discuss. And so, again, the hope is, since we're starting this conversation earlier, this is not only going to impact non-barg, but we do have union groups that hopefully will move to these new contribution changes or move to these new plans. And I just want to make sure that they are involved, um, just so that they also have a voice, and they also have this way to kind of come and discuss with the board about these changes that are potentially being made. But most of it is not about the, the provider itself, it's about other things outside of that.
It's, it's about the cost. Um, I, I would say that I think our, our population as employees are happier with Primera than they were with Group Health. Or United Healthcare, I should say. Um, so there's been those kind of talks like, oh, glad we're going back to that. I, I know myself, I'm one of those people. Um, so there is the benefits to having that kind of group coverage. Um, in the past, historically, there's been tier changes, so we're on a four-tier plan. Um, our vision is, uh, composite, so we pay one for everybody. I'm, would have to, you know, like dig into find out how those tier changes could, could work, but those are also structure changes within the plan. So there could be things that are different that do become more of a composite, of course. And there's kind of the argument on the employee side of, I don't want to pay for everybody. If I'm a, if I'm only having to cover myself, I don't necessarily want to pay for the family. You know, but that family might be like, hey, thanks, thanks for the help. So, you know, we're not going to be able to make everybody happy, but there's definitely some other structure changes. And then, not that this necessarily matters, but I do want to say, so we went back to Primera last year. With that negotiation, we did have an eight percent, or I'm sorry, 11% rate cap this year. Um, they were able, the hub was able to negotiate down to 3.4. We have no sort of rate cap for next year. So we also have, so that might be a matter of going out to bid or something like that, if we were to stay that way. We also have a benefits committee that is not well-attended until it gets down to the August timeframe. Um, but that should have a representative from every department and every union group. So I think it would be good to encourage the benefit committee to come in, to be a part of these conversations. Mackenzie's been, you know, addressing to the, the union groups during the negotiations. These conversations are going to be going on, because we do want you to be able to hear from the groups and the employees as well.
What do state employees get for insurance, and how is that managed?
I have no idea.
They, so state employees, and, and teachers now as well, they're part of PEB, uh, Public Employees Benefit Board, so it's PEB. Uniform is the primary healthcare plan that they utilize, so.
Is it cut and dry, or do they have these types of conversations that go on?
Well, it's much more cut and dry, let's just say that, yes, they're not.
More expensive?
Um, PEB, PEB would be probably pretty comparative to what we are, uh, what we're providing. Fairly competitive. I would say PEB's probably a little bit more, but PEB's an option that you can look at. I think PEB, and I'm, I could be wrong, I think PEB, you may have to take the entire group. I'm not positive if PEB is that way or not.
I'm not 100% sure, but if that's a route that you want to go, I mean, we can look at that legally and see what we need to do there.
We spend an extremely lot of time going over this, and it just seems like.
What does PEB stand for?
Public Employee Benefit Board, I think is what it stands for.
And I, I know the county had PEB at one point. I believe we stepped away from them in 2007.
For what reason?
I, I don't know. I was barely here as an employee. So I couldn't tell you. I think we might have gone to WCIF after that, and then I know there was a break from that, and.
Yeah, I mean, you could re-explore WCIF, Washington County's Insurance Fund, which is, uh, which is, you know, comprised of the, of about. Yeah, I mean, you could re-explore WCIF, Washington County's Insurance Fund, which is, which is, you know, comprised of the, of about twenty, I'm not sure how many counties there are, and then, and there's another number of other subgroups, public employer subgroups that are part of that. I think they're more expensive than PEB, I think, but I'm not positive, but it's another option, more self-governance for you.
All right, is there any other discussion or questions? Thank you very much, I'm glad we're getting started early.
Absolutely, and just so I reiterate what you want, you just, you want a presentation or an idea of different plans, who we could go for? You want a NICR presentation?
Yes.
You want, you want to hear from other groups?
Now, on the ICRA presentation, do we want Mr. Harris to come back in? Or do we need, want somebody else different from that to get?
My, my thought on that, and I apologize for cutting you off, because it was Harris that you had heard from last time, the one person with that you weren't able to hear, and I think it was because we had a time constraint, was the, I don't remember his name, but the individual who runs the IPA or something like that. It's the, the one who actually does the stuff, deals with the, in the employees, things like that. I've, I've also heard last year, two different presentations about ICRA from two different brokers. So I think it would be important for you to hear that from a, a broker too, if not a couple of them. So I do have the contacts of the five different brokers that I talked to last year. I'm more than happy to have them scheduled to come in and start talking to you, you can, you know.
I'd love to see.
They'll definitely have more.
Love to see, you know, that we have, we have, we have ICRA, we have standard, we have state, you know, I'd love to see, you know, and kind of have a differentiation of what those different ones do. And, because it, I think we have about four different potential options. And then, as we, as we kind of begin the narrowing or winnowing process of bringing it towards this is what's best for the citizens of Franklin County.
Yeah, okay.
And I'd like to also make sure we post this so every department head and every employee knows that we're doing this on that day so that everybody can tune in and listen.
Absolutely, I think you're probably going to end up with kind of a series of workshops.
Yes.
It's going to be burnt out otherwise for you to, to bring in.
Yeah, and I mean, there is going to definitely be some repeat, but you know, they're, they're brokers, it's business too, so.
So do you suggest that we schedule this next workshop on this in early February?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we'll do that.
Yeah, we'll go in.
On two thousand and seven, when we changed from, you said we had what type of insurance?
United, or?
PEB.
I know we had PEB.
The state.
Was that about the same time that we were able to start converting our insurance benefits to cash?
I would have to go back to see when VIBA came into play. I, I, I started here in two thousand and six. I seem to remember always having VIBA as an option. I honestly didn't learn until two thousand and twenty-two when I went into HR, that there were groups that actually took cash in lieu. So I would have to dive in and get some history for you.
I'd, I'd love to have that answer to that question.
Yes, we'd like to have that history, thank you.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to the next one, which is the revision of the road maintenance policy and procedure statement. Mr. Erdman.
So, I've come to the board to go over our, a revision we'd like to make to the current dust abatement policy, which is our internal RPP number four. We use magnesium chloride to, for county purposes, to stabilize roads, which means we're trying to get less blading. We're trying to keep them tighter longer. The product, you know, depending on the conditions that it goes down in, and the conditions that it has to work in through the years, is, you know, has a curve of success and, and failure to it. Along with that, we allow citizens to apply it as a dust abatement. That's, its other use is to, is to keep dust down. We don't use it for that, it's a side benefit for us, for, for the citizens. This is a dust abatement product that helps keep dust down on the road. So.
There's that pointer setting there, a lot of times you can use it, make sure it's on and the pointer will fast forward.
I apologize, sometimes PowerPoints and I don't get along very well, I'm not.
I knew there was a reason I liked you.
All right.
We're in the same spot.
Yeah, just had to find the right button, yeah. So, the key points are revising the dust abatement policy. Changes needed to provide clarification for other permit process and the county's responsibilities. Transfer administrative and billing duties to the vendor and the supplier of the dust abatement permits and remove Public Works from the financial burden of managing billing and tracking costs. So, a number of years ago, in the dust abatement process, we've, we've kind of let citizens piggyback on our, on our contract with our vendor. At some point, one of the vendors did not want to take responsibility for billing the private permits on their own and push that responsibility on to Public Works to be a third-party biller for them, which we don't think is, is a proper function for us. That practice has gone on for a while and, and we're trying to find a way to rectify that and, and get the, the county out of a private contract. Our role for, for dust abatement with the citizens is to prep the roadways. That's our role in the dust abatement process. Laying it down and, and stuff is, is a private transaction between the landowner and, and the magnesium chloride company.
So, if a, if one of the, the landowners out in the county want to have this dust abatement done, they would come in, apply for permit, coordinate with Public Works. Public Works blade the road in coordination with the supplier and the supplier comes and lays down the product.
Right, that's, that's, in a nutshell, the general process.
And this would just simply make it so that we can still coordinate with this, with the dust abatement company. It's just that the, the payment and all the, that process is between.
Yeah, they would, yeah, and, and later on in the presentation, we'll get to what their, the current vendors has been telling us. And there's been a consolidation, we used to have two main vendors and now, well, like a lot of the world these days, the bigger fish bought the smaller fish. So now we got a bigger fish. And as I said, applicants have been allowed to piggyback on it. You know, it's difficult, especially the way the permitting process is laid out. When we go from sections of road to the county where we're, we're using it for, for stabilization, might adjoining pieces that people are going to use for, for dust abatement. So that line of where, where our work stopped and the private citizens' application begin can be kind of a gray area because it's a continuous process. And it's, it can be a little bit difficult tracking the field is where our stuff ended and where theirs began.
The, the, I want to make sure that I'm understanding, you and I had had this conversation, but now I may be a little confused. Does the private, the private citizen's permit is for their private road?
Yes, well, it, it, it is in front of their private property on a county road. Now, as far as, as private roads go, that's a completely private transaction and we do not, we're not involved in that whatsoever.
I've, I've watched this quite a few times over the years, I've seen this used. I can appreciate your simplification and, yeah, county staying out of it between private.
Yeah, I, I just don't think it's an appropriate role, you know, I, I'm not, I'm pretty familiar with the history of it. I didn't really, you know, wasn't in a position to disagree with it when, when it got implemented. We've been working through it for the last ten years. And, you know, we're just really to a point where we think, well, we really should address this and that the policy itself is, it was due for an update. So we thought this was the time to approach it.
How often every year does this happen where a private landowner has the, their road in front of their place oiled?
We usually do it once a year and it, and it depends, I think we did, it's in here somewhere. Yeah, right there. Dust abatement permits is, you know, almost two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That we, that, that's our cost for going in, in, and producing the road and, and, and the cost of the, that we rebuild for the, for the magnesium chloride. We do not charge the thirteen percent administrative costs. I think earlier there might have been an administrative fee, but since we are doing normal county road work and prepping the roads, I mean, it's a blading operation, this is what we do. We didn't see any reason to add an administrative cost for something that's a normal process that is accounted, our salary is accounted for in that line item in, in that activity. So you can see the details for, you know, kind of what the, what our administrative costs kind of run. One of the issues that we deal with, and it, it doesn't end up being, you know, sometimes it takes a little longer for people to pay than thirty days. We always get, everyone always pays, but we, sometimes it drags out a little bit. So one of the things we've talked about internally is, well, after thirty days, would the board approve us charging a one percent interest rate on, on bills that go past thirty or forty-five or sixty days, whatever, whatever number? To help, because it, it does cost us, then it does cost us administrative time to rebuild and, and, you know, write letters and make phone calls and say, hey, you know.
So, right now, that two hundred and thirty-four thousand, so right now, somebody comes and applies for a permit, goes through the whole process, gets done, and then we take the proportionate share of that two thirty-four and apply it to Jeff's bill on the permit that he applied for. And then you have thirty days to, to pay for it.
Right.
And so your proposal would, would now make it so that the process relatively stays the same, except for the dust abatement company would now bill him directly. And the county would still coordinate the, the installation of that, it's just that they would have nothing to do with the billing of.
Being it's a county road, we have to have oversight on what goes on.
Yep.
So have we, if, if we bid it that way, will the, I would assume the cost of delivering that service will now cost more?
Well, that's, that's hard to say whether it would or not, and, and that was another angle, I shouldn't say angle, another approach that we were looking to take with, with this was to write it in the contract that the, the vendors were responsible for this. Because they were the ones that came to us and said, no, we won't do it, we won't, we won't build the, you know, this is a continuous operation, you guys figure it out and bill them. We want our money upfront.
That, that's not normal business.
No, no, and, and, you know, the, the permit process is always allowed for anybody to get their dust abatement whenever they want to go get it. They just let us know when it's going to happen, we'll come out, prep the road, and then they have a certain amount of time to apply that product and, per the permit. And so there's been more than one, you know, just private transaction where we come and do our stuff and they're, they've talked to whoever's applying the product that they want, because there are different products and it's not just magnesium chloride. And as long as that is an approved product and we see the material spec sheet on it, we, we don't have a problem with that. So you can go to any of the vendors out there to, and that's, that's always been a part of that permit process.
So, what would your proposal be for the next steps? Is that we would invite everybody that's, that has used this process, this permitting process and, and dust abatement over the last five years, send them a letter and say, hey, we're going to have a public hearing on this and potentially pass some new.
If that's what pleases the board, if, if that's what you, the way you would like to handle it, we did have a draft letter mostly just informing people, hey, you know, in the piggybacking process, we, we don't want to be the middle person anymore.
But they, it might be, if I'm understanding it correctly, in the ideal world, it'll be seamless. It'll just, it'll just be a different billing, it'll be a billing coming from the company versus a billing coming from the county.
And, and here's what the vendor told us, what, how they would go about it. So, they won't schedule work until the magnesium chloride's paid for upfront. And so, once that vendor has received the money for the magnesium chloride that they're contracted to apply, the landowner will get ahold of us, we'll prep it and they will make arrangements for it to be laid down.
How private business does them, I don't know that that makes any difference to us.
No.
Okay.
That's the way to do it, right there. And that way that you don't schedule it until it's been paid for.
Yeah, and, you know, that way it keeps us out of having to, you know, chase people and, and make our own citizens uncomfortable because we're picking up the phone going, hey, you know.
Sounds like a bookkeeping nightmare.
Yeah.
Well, the problem may be that you may show up and blade that road and a week later they pay. So are they going to wait until you come back to blade again or if you bring your grader?
That's, that's, they, they make the arrangements for the mag chloride, they let us know when it's going to be applied. And we make arrangements, okay, we're going to be there and you're going to, we'll, we'll prep it, you get the, the stuff on it right after we're there. You know, we'll probably be there to pay attention to how it's going on and, and stuff. So it, there is, there is a process and I forgive me, I slipped out of my head. If it's the same day, we come and prep it and then they've got so many hours to get the mag chloride on it. Because we don't want the road to be driven on and getting tore up before we get the product on it and.
But you have scheduled times when you come and blade these roads, so.
Yeah, we do, and I mean, we'll try and, and fit it in there.
Okay.
You know, the benefit, it's a plus and minus on, on, on dust abatement roads. And, and why in the permit, if it's near an intersection or near a section that we're doing that we want it tied in? Because as, as Commissioner Baumann knows, we don't want to blade those magnesium chloride areas continuously. But if we've got a checkerboard patch, it's really difficult for the blade man to go blade an untreated area, then skip over a treated area and then, you know, the little checkerboard square. It's, it's kind of hard to get your wrinkle to balance out there.
So how are you, how are you going to avoid, and maybe, you know, maybe I'm still not understanding. How are you going to avoid one property owner, one week, saying, I'm ready to put the magnesium down, I've paid? And the company's saying, I'm doing it tomorrow. And then, a week later, the adjoining property owner does the exact same thing and you're having to remobilize to go out there.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's never been an issue in the past.
Is it going to be an issue now if they're the ones responsible for when they pay?
Well, they still have the opportunity, you know, to pay the vendor upfront at the same time that we're going out to do our work. And if they do that, it'll work seamlessly like it has before in the past and we'll just be there, we'll train it.
And, and you blade at your schedule, not theirs.
Yeah, we make arrangements, yeah.
Yeah, you, you say this is what the schedule's going to look like, it's not that they're calling you.
Always, always have somebody available all the time. You know, most of the time we're very responsive, but you know, there may be situations where it's like, no, you got to wait a week or, hey, we just, we just did this. You know, wait a couple of weeks and we'll be back.
You can't set up a schedule that says this is when we're grading if you want to apply it, that now's your opportunity?
Well, we kind of do that with, with our base stabilization and that's what we've allowed. It's like, okay, hey, this is when we're doing our work, guys. You want us to come do your stuff and, and we usually do that. We have like a two-week period where we go out, we do our stuff, we do. We have like a two week period where we go out, we do our stuff, we do the permit stuff all at once. So that opportunity won't go away. It's just that we're not, they're going to have to pay for their magnesium chloride upfront with the vendor.
Okay.
You know, but this, this, this little loophole has always been in the policy that if they don't want to do it when we're doing it, they're free to go out and make a deal with whoever. They just need to let us know so we can make arrangements to prep the road and.
Isn't that more expensive for you to go out and regrade it?
Depends.
That's when you might have to add a cost onto the landowner if you've got to make a special trip out there for them.
Yeah, and that's part of the scheduling thing. Cause like I said, if we just got there and blade it, we're going to tell them, hey, you know, make, you know, a couple of weeks or whatever, when, whenever the, a more routine schedule for that road needs it or whatever. But everybody's really pretty good. When you live on a gravel road, you know how it's going to behave and.
So what do we got to do here to make this, put it in place? Do we need a, go to, on a regular meeting? Do we need to make a?
Yeah, we did, we did put together a draft resolution.
Yeah.
I'm willing to bring that back to the board on the fifth if you're happy with how the, the policy is and, and the letter that we're looking to send to the landowners. Yeah, okay. So if, if, if the board, if that is the pleasure of the board, I will bring it back on the fifth, put it on the consent agenda unless you want to have a further discussion of it.
Commissioners?
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I would, I would just encourage us to let, especially our regular, you know, yearly customers.
And it's the purpose of the letter. Cause we've, we've got good relationships with the people that, you know, we've permitted with before. And we want to try and, and, you know, we'll help to facilitate this as best we can.
Okay.
So reading through the packet, just one quick question. If I, if I read it correctly, you can apply fresh, clean oil, but not used oil.
I think that was the old policy. I would be very doubtful that EPA would allow that. And that's why we asked for the material sheet. We want, I'd have to go back and look at that. I mean, I know it was an old practice. I've actually old enough, I've seen it done. Yeah, I hope yes, yeah. I've seen all kinds of things.
Oils and.
I don't think you can do that anymore.
Oils and/or waste products are prohibited.
Creating a hazardous waste treatment.
Hopefully we clean that. If not, thank you for pointing it out because I will clean that up in the document.
No, no, it says it very clearly, oils and waste products are prohibited.
Okay, great. Yeah, so.
Well, I read the part where it was talked about fresh oil. And I'm like, well, honestly, what's the difference between fresh oil if you're putting it on dirt?
Well, I know.
Because used oil is clean oil with dirt in it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Yep, thanks, Greg.
All right, that moves us down to our last workshop item, study session on Title 17.
Thank you. Thanks for confirming that this is still on your agenda. I misunderstood the agenda earlier. All right, I'm Millian Van Devender. Nice to see some of you again. I work for AHBL and we have a contract with the county for providing on-call development services, planning services. We've been doing that since 2017. I've personally been doing it since 2017. And I bring that up because Title 17 zoning and these revisions that we're proposing are not just us proposing it. We've been working on this probably since 2017, 2018, off and on. And we've worked closely with county staff through those years. So just to give you a little bit of backstory on where this is coming from. We started, like I said, we started this process many years ago when we were looking at the last update of your comprehensive plan. That was around 2018. And anytime you update your comp plan, you want to look at your codes as well to make sure everything's in line. Your comp plan is your long-term goals and policies. So you want to make sure that your regulations match your goals and policies and can implement your goals and policies. So we took a look at the code, the whole thing. And we started with the administrative section and updated that several years ago and got that through, improved some processes, improved, made it clear on who does what, which, which, who has the authority to approve things and what process different permits have to go through. Started with that, cleaned that up. And then the county prioritized, the subdivision code was the next one that we worked on and we got that passed, I think, two years ago, at least two years ago. Improved all the process with subdividing land. So then the next step is to work on your zoning code, which is Title 17. So to that effect, we drafted some revisions. We worked with county staff, sent it to the different departments, had it reviewed. We worked closely with the former director, Derek Broughton. And in November 23, we took it to the planning commission for a workshop. And then briefed the planning commission again on the items in December of 23 and January of last year of 24. They were not ready for a workshop until June. There were some new planning commission members. So we felt and staff felt that a workshop was important at that point rather than going straight to a public hearing. So we, we did that, took that, took care of that in June. And then they had their first public hearing on it in September last year. Sent it out for SEPA, went through all of the process requirements that you have to go through. Went through all of those things last year. It's been through Department of Commerce, public agencies have had opportunities as well as other members of the public and interested parties. And then the planning commission held a second public hearing on December 3 and recommended approval to you, to the board. So the next step would be for this board to hold a public hearing and make any suggested changes. And then eventually to adopt it would be the hope. So just to be clear, obviously there's no action needed today, but that's just the process where we're headed. Just to give a brief overview of the proposed changes, I'll start by saying that there, the majority of Title 17 has not been touched since 2005, 20 years ago. So a lot's happened in 20 years. So just the simple stuff, the low hanging fruit organization. We've made some suggested improvements to that. As it is right now, there's a very cumbersome way. If you, if you own a piece of property and you want to do something with it, you don't know what you can do with it. You should be able to just open the code and find how you're zoned, what you can do with your property. I can have commercial or I can have housing or I can have whatever. The Franklin County code right now is a little bit cumbersome to figure that out. There's a table of uses that's located somewhere random. Like we, I've been working with it for seven, however many years, and I still don't remember exactly where that table is. So you have to dig through and find that. So one of the big organization, organizational pieces that we're suggesting and that staff has, has helped put together is to bring all of the uses into a set of tables that are located in a very logical place. And tables make things more efficient, easier to use. You can see, oh, this is my zone or this is the use I want to have. I want to have a commercial business. Looks like I can have that in this zone, that zone. I can't have it in that zone. Makes it very clean or a lot cleaner. Another change would be regulatory changes. A lot changes in 20 years. A lot has changed just in our world, in the state. So a lot of regulatory changes that needed to be added in have been proposed at this time. Process improvements, we want to make things more efficient. We want to make it clearer. Needs to be transparent, needs to be easier to use. So yeah, and, and having the experience of working for you for so long, we've been able to see, because we've worked at the counter in the planning department and been able to see what kind of questions come in all the time. How, what are the process things that really trip people up and confuse them? So we've been able to add some of those things in. Modernization, your code has a definition for gaming or for pool hall. And there's a use category for pool hall. Well, what even is that anymore? Like that's a use from 20 years ago or more.
I want to see one.
What's that?
I said, I don't know what it is, but I want to see one.
Yeah, so things like that have been, we've attempted to clean things like that up and add them into, maybe that's just a commercial use. Let's just treat that as a commercial use. Clarifications and expanded detail, I think that explains itself. We've just tried to take our experience with the county and similar sized places and situations and add in those clarifications, expand on detail. The things that staff gets questions about every week, that needs to be fixed. And then just consistency and grammar. So here's a list of the key changes. I will go through these briefly individually, so I'm not going to touch on it here. One of the, again, low hanging fruit, potentially we see it as low hanging fruit. There are several zones, RS2, RS12, R1, R2, BP. These are zones that are still listed in your code, but they're not anywhere on your map. There are no properties in your county that have these zoning designations. So the proposal is to just get them out of your code. Cut your code down by a few pages potentially because it cuts out some chapters. So to repeal those. Quite a bit of effort and work has gone into revising the, anything that has to do with accessory dwelling unit requirements. This is attached ADUs and detached ADUs. Some of this is just logic and for permitting purposes. So currently there's a requirement that one dwelling be owner occupied for eight months. How does staff regulate that? How, you know, they're not going to go, they don't have time or shouldn't be going and knocking on the door and asking for proof of owner occupation. Again, removing prohibition on renting of rooms and then removing a requirement that detached ADUs be used only to care for aged or disabled relatives. Really hard to regulate that. So proposing to strike that altogether. Some other changes are just clarifying where, so in what zones ADUs are allowed and the sizes that are allowed and the number of ADUs you can have on a piece of property. So clarifying that. Treating detached ADUs as a separate dwelling unit for purposes of density calculations and distinguishing between parcels that are located within and those located outside of urban growth areas. So just defining and really being very purposeful about where are ADUs allowed? In what format? Attached, detached? How big can they be? Clarifying all of that. I already spoke to this a little bit, so proposed changes to the use tables and the uses throughout. So we've talked about, I talked about organizing that table of uses. We've also taken a deep dive into revising the uses that are allowed in the AP 20 and AP 40, which are your ag zones, agriculture zones, and in your rural zones. So this was an effort to prioritize agricultural uses on existing agricultural lands. So we're not trying to take away farmland. And then also looking at implementing goals and policies in the county's comp plan. Specifically with rural lands, there were some goals and policies that weren't necessarily being implemented. And then tidying up other uses to avoid confusion and redundancy. We did a little bit of work on the planned unit development standards. I know that the county adopted an ordinance last year, I think it was last year, about regarding open space in PUDs. So we are acknowledging that and bringing in anything that's occurred in the last years that aren't shown in your code right now. We're making sure to incorporate that. Anything that's adopted will be reflected in this. But looking at the PUDs, doing a little bit of work there and then adding a section on master planned resorts. There's a section, a new section on public facilities. So essential public facilities could be state institutions. I think landfills fall under that. It's large public facilities that benefit the county and the community and may be more difficult to cite. So we've provided some information about that, some definitions and the process. So it includes the application requirements, criteria for review and citing requirements. Did some, propose some improvements to the outdoor lighting section so that it applies to all zoning districts, not just residential? And incorporating some dark sky standards. Oh, this is, this is a favorite. This is a, an example of what I was talking about earlier. Your code currently includes definitions and provisions, regulations for pawn and second, pawn shops and secondhand shops, like thrift stores.
I'm thinking that Commissioner Mullen should start a pawn shop and pool hall together in the AP 20 zone.
Not a bad idea.
I have everything for it.
He's ready to go.
You're ready? Well, we're going to make it easier for you with these proposed changes. Cause now we're just going to call it commercial.
It's going to be easier.
Well, man.
Let's go.
Things in one spot.
It's just going to be retail now. Doesn't need to be called out as a pawn shop. What, I, I don't know why they did that. One just administrative change is to make it clear that your zoning map is your GIS data, zoning data set. It's just a technicality that we're cleaning up. Doing a little work to revise the section on factory assembled homes. So requiring them, requiring site-built and factory-assembled homes in rural residential and rural settlement areas to be built on poured concrete or masonry block foundations. And then making sure that it's clear that a factory-assembled home is subject to the same standards as site-built homes. And then finally, right to farm notification and disclosure. So creating a new section under the right to farm that deals with the notification and disclosure of that information. So the next steps would be to get, for you to get familiar with the proposed updates and we will send you, we will make sure that you get the draft proposed changes. Everything will be either strike through or underline. So it's clear what's being proposed to change. It's all online if you want to take a peek. It's all through the planning commission minutes and everything. If you want to see the whole record, you want to see who commented. There's a comment and response matrix where we've summarized their comment and then replied basically as to what we did, if we changed anything or not. And then it's up to you, if you want to talk to the community, this is a legislative item. Let everybody know this is going on, try to get feedback. And then we'll need you to set a public hearing for this and then eventually hope that you would adopt the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm sorry, I didn't give you the proper introduction, but you're, you're with AHBL Inc.
Yes.
And Millian?
Yes.
All righty, well, thank you very much because we were just talking about this yesterday and our code and stuff. And there is a person that we may be bringing on that we want to overlook this too, to look over it and make sure that everything's okay. And he's very, you'll be working with him if he comes on. I appreciate all the hard work you've put into this. And how many page, pages long is this?
A lot.
I know, but you said you were able to take some chapters out. I was just wondering how much you abbreviated. Is like 100 pages long?
I mean, I can, I can, I have it pulled up on my phone. I can look right now, but.
Just a guesstimate.
75 to 100.
Yeah, cause as, as a commissioner, I do like to read through everything and it's going to take a long time to read through that. But I appreciate the fact that you have went through it and are looking out for our best interest.
Many times, yes.
So how does this, good afternoon, is it afternoon? Good afternoon, Millian. Could you maybe explain a little bit how this fits in? Cause I know we're, we're coming up on our planning cycle where we have to, you know, update our map and look at our critical areas and resource lands. How does this sort of fit into that process?
So that's a really good question. The planning commission had a lot of questions about that. So what we're doing right now was intended to implement your comprehensive plan in 2018 that was eventually adopted in 2021. So what we're doing right now is bringing your code up to 2018, basically. We've done some work to see what's coming from the state and what's eventually going to be required. We've, we've implemented some of that just while we were working on it, specifically ADUs. There's a lot of stuff that's come down, affordable housing. We went ahead and added that in. What's going to happen with your next comp plan, which that cycle is coming up? I think you're due in '26.
Yes.
We'll go through this again. This lift is big. We'll go through this again. This lift is big and brings it up to 2018 and should make the next lift easier at, at the 2026 point.
So, I'm not quite sure how to ask this question. Pretty regularly, we, we have application for like the height variance, for accessory, accessory buildings on a, on a lot. And to my knowledge, I've asked this several times of several different people, to my knowledge that there has never been, one of those applications declined. And I have asked that this become an administrative thing, or that we adjust or amend code to make it so that we're not having these so regularly? Because we always, we always approve them. As far as I'm aware, there's no, nobody is against doing this. Is this the proper document to make those adjustments to?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And then, over the last number of years, prior to becoming a commissioner, and certainly since becoming commissioner, I've had quite a few of the citizens express frustration with a few things in here. One of them, and specifically, being the, apparently in this, there is something that says you cannot have a manufactured home before a certain date. It's a, you know, it's an age, or a, an age that moves. What is this, this is the document that we would adjust that as well?
Correct. And that is a building code provision that gets incorporated into this.
Okay. And that has to do with the International Building Code?
Correct.
And which?
And I think, I think it's tied to the HUD guidelines too, right?
Correct.
And that is, currently, we are following the 2021 IBC, International Building Code. Is that accurate?
It was just, they just passed a new one, and we just updated it. Might, that might be right. I'm not sure.
And this, we are following this regulation because we have adopted the International Building Code?
That would be my understanding.
And with that, can we adopt the International Building Code in part, or are we required to say yes or no?
So the International Building Code's a minimum, you're right, by the way, it's 2021. It's the minimum, so it's the, the floor minimum safety standards?
And as the county legislative authority, we don't have the option of not following it in completeness?
Right. It's, it's, it's state law, so it applies just whether we adopt it or not. So we can adopt, typically what cities and counties do is they'll adopt it, and then they'll say, but we're going to do these things. You can do things that are more protective of public health and safety. You couldn't say you're going to make your walls thinner, or whatever the...
So as a county legislative authority, we cannot legally have any standard that is less than?
Less protective. And that's kind of a, kind of a subjective analysis, you might say, but, oh, sorry. That might be a little bit subjective, like what is more protective, what's less protective. But I know if you look at other municipalities, they will, you know, adopt it and say, but we're going to change lighting standards, we're going to change these...
To, to an increased...
Right.
To, to a, a higher standard.
Right.
But we cannot go below.
Correct.
So how is it in a, in the, in the, this example that we're using as a mobile home? I don't remember what the age is, but you have somebody that wants to make a modification or move it or something like that. And as soon as they touch it, it is worth nothing because they can no longer sell it. They can, they cannot move it and reset it and relive in it. They, they, essentially, we have taken away their ability to use the property that they own.
Right. I'm, I'm not sure the answer to that, but if it's coming from the building code, it'd be because it's a public health and safety standard, and the permit, the request for the permit is what's triggering that, that review.
I, I understand that. I'm just, it's, we, we are, we're tying people's hands that, you know, people can, I, I grew up building and maintaining mobile homes. And, and so we, we essentially, by code, that you've confirmed that we can't as a county change, we, we, you know, you either use it as it is, in its current form, because if you touch it, it no longer can be used.
That's, sounds probably, the way, it sounds a lot like an, like, like an existing non-conforming structure where you're not allowed to really do much to modify it, because once you start doing that, well, now you've got to bring it up to current standards. And so you, usually when there's existing non-conformities in the county, nothing happens until you need a permit. Sort of, you know, if you work in a planning office, you'll hear that, you know?
Yeah.
You don't really get, get a chance to, because then you run into a takings analysis. Once somebody wants something, then you can...
And that's the part that I'm trying to understand, because that, I know of a number of scenarios now, that, that somebody wants to modify, adjust, you know, something that they currently own as personal property. And, and the, the International Building Code now deems that basically worthless, because you can't sell it, because I can't, I can't buy it from you and put it on my property. I can't, you know, I can't own it and move it from, you know, Lot 1 to Lot 2, because it, it's now past that age. And I'm, I'm studying right now, I believe that somebody has told me, and I'm trying to verify it, I'm trying to think of the way to say this. In, in, you know, when a building was permitted, if you add an addition to it, the, the building as it existed has to, has to be maintained at the code of when it, when it was built. And your addition now has to conform to the higher or the new code. And so I'm getting conflicting. So, you know, I'm, I'm adding an addition to a house that was built in 1960. I have, the 1960 house has to be built to the 1960 standard, and the addition has to be built to the 2021 International Building Code standard. But I'm finding it conflicting, and I'm just trying to, but getting back to this, I'm just, I, I think that this is the document where we make some of these adjustments to our regulations that we can control, which does not include the International Building Code.
Correct.
Do you, do you know how much the board can change without it going back to the Planning Commission?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I think it would, you know, as, as long as it's, I think that would be up to the board, actually. And I, I, I think it would be, if it's reasonable, you know, if you said, we want to scrap the whole thing and start over?
I'm, I'm just curious.
I would recommend you send it back to the Planning Commission.
If we addressed something that was not earlier considered by the Planning Commission, does the board have that autonomy to do that?
Yes.
Even though it hasn't gone through SEPA, even though it hasn't gone through any of the other?
That would be the tricky part. If there are significant changes, then we would have to do some kind of amended SEPA checklist process.
I was just trying to figure out how much the board has autonomy to, to proceed.
And something that we explained to the Planning Commission and is worth repeating here is, this is not set in stone. Like we said, 2026, you need to look at it again comprehensively. It's also something that we suggested the Planning Commission is perhaps you make a list of priorities. We would like to address this accessory dwelling height issue. Planning Commission, you know, you could direct Planning Commission to look into that, to have staff look into it, propose some language, propose an ordinance, and get those individual items, if they don't get caught here.
Yeah.
Get those individual items taken care of.
Yeah.
And that, you know, those, those can take three to six months to, to process and get through, and, and could get done more quickly than this has taken. This is, like I said, a big lift to get it to 2018, maybe 2020, to get it to that point. But then we can, we can make changes after that, too.
We, we have indicated to, you were referencing Mr. Bratton, that, for instance, the accessory dwelling unit, to get that process refined and make it an administrative process instead of coming here every time, you know?
I thought we might have addressed that. Did we not?
He, he was working on it. He said that this was going to address that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought we gave, got administrative to go to 26 feet or something. I can't remember. I can't remember.
Oh, as far as height?
Height, yeah.
I don't remember that, but possibly.
So, we're at this point right now, when would you like to see this public hearing? How soon? I mean, I'd like to try to review this as best I can.
And I just looked at it, and it's about 150, 160 pages with the additions and deletions. But a lot of that...
Audio book version for me to listen to.
That's a great idea.
That is.
It is a great idea.
We drive a lot, to be great.
Just have somebody read it to you. A lot of that is the repealed sections, maybe 15 pages. I'll, I'll be positive and say it's that many.
And to save a tree...
A large print.
As I say, to save a tree, we'll go digital, correct? So we don't print, print out four trees here?
Totally your, your choice.
Digital is fine with me.
Have you sent that to us already?
No, but we will.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we get it in PDF, then the board can either print it out or read it online.
Yeah. And we appreciate, you know, any comments or feedback. As far as the public hearing, been working on this for a while. It would be good to get it across the finish line, but I certainly want you to take the time you need to study it and to talk to people. And so that's, you know...
And maybe what we ought to do is have, have a grace period here where we can look at it, and then have you back for another workshop before we have the public hearing.
We could do that. Certainly, if you wanted, if you have specific questions and can get those questions to us, then we could come back.
Much along the line as Mr. Johnson asked, how much can we change it? And if we wanted to do this, what would it entail?
Mm-hmm.
That's...
I, I think the other thing would be helpful for the board. I can see the comments that were made, and if those were just the written comments, or if those were other comments. I think, you know, advising them, what were the hotspots that they should really be, what, what did the public have concern about? What did the Planning Commission, you know, where, where are the, the, the points that they really need to be thinking about? That, yeah, that was just administrative in nature and it wasn't anything versus, well, the, this, this was, had a lot of discussion, and there was a lot of contentiousness over it.
So, at, at the end of this, there's a, there was a time for other business, and so I was going to ask a question, but I think this is probably a more appropriate time to ask it. I am very thankful that we have this format now, the workshop format. And so a question that I was going to bring up during the other business was, with the, such an important role as the Planning Commission, would it be proper or appropriate to ask the Planning Commission to come in so that we can sit down and have a, have a discussion about planning and where we are headed? And so the, that was the question that I was going to have. And so if, if that is possible, would this be appropriate time to have a workshop on this item? And, you know, like, like Eric said, what is the areas, you know, the hot topics and the, and the, you know, the pinch points? And maybe that format would allow us to have an open discussion with us and the people that we have asked to advise us. And, you know, they wrestle this more at length. I don't know. I'm, I'm asking the question. I'm, I'm thinking out loud.
Is there a problem with that?
No, it's, it's similar to the thing that we've discussed before, where we have the county meeting with the city. And so you have two bodies that are subject to the OPMA that both have notice...
They open them together.
...requirements prior to discussing, you know, matters within their purview. So as, as long as both bodies were providing notice of a meeting, you could have a joint meeting. There's no problem with that.
If they would open their meeting concurrently with you opening your meeting, and then you...
Yep. So what, what, what my proposal on that would be, and this would, this would follow along with giving us a little time to consider, is not February the 12th, but the following one, which I believe is April sometime, which is our next night meeting?
Night meetings?
If we would, I seen it somewhere here, I'm not sure. What if, what if we... Yeah. So May the 21st, what if we were to work towards May 21st and say that we were going to have light, light business that night? And, you know, our primary role that night would be a, a workshop, that we would have Planning Commission, the commissioners together, and we would, we would have a robust conversation that you could be a part of, and, and, and we could, you know, that would give us time between now and the May 21st to, to wrestle through some of the questions that we had and, and get together. I, I would enjoy the, the opportunity to have the Planning Commission and us together to, to talk through. I think it would smooth things for the, the, the people in this county that need these services.
Yeah. Have we given ourselves enough time on, if we were to do it on May 21st? I believe so. This...
This one's one that's important we get it right, not that we get it fast.
Yes. Exactly. And May is down the road, so we'd have ample time to look things over and discuss. And, but want to thank you for everything you've done so far, because we are behind the times here. 2005, that was a long time ago. So...
That's the other day.
It was. Seems like it anyway.
20 years ago. Thank you so much.
What, what we may want to think about is giving yourself a, since we've talked about accountability, giving yourself a timeframe for getting through that document.
Yeah.
And then having staff back to be able to, to ask questions. And so whether that's a month from now, whether that's...
Right. So we might have you back for another workshop.
Of course.
Yeah, get it in my hands. I'll, I'll go through it. That'd be great.
Okay. We'll have it to you by the end of the week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that takes us down to public comment. Is there anybody for public comment? Or anybody on the phone? Nobody on the phone?
Just a thank you for the attention to detail and meeting this out. Brought it to a higher priority in my mind. And I like the dialogue that I'm seeing. I hope we can see, do a lot more of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. With that, no further business, this workshop is adjourned.
Nice job, guys.
Yeah, well, we're, we're working on it.